All right, all right. Welcome to the meeting, City Council Workshop Meeting for March 11th, 2022. Ms. Hilbrick, will you please do a roll call?
Good afternoon. Councilman Dela Garza.
I am present.
Mayor Pro Tim Solis. Councilwoman Crocker.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilwoman Young.
Here.
Councilman Loughran. And Mayor Bucknay.
Here. Y'all will join me in the pledges and then we'll have a moment of silence afterwards. All right, Mr. Garza, good afternoon. Do you have any announcements and/or reminders?
Yeah.
Okay. Items from council, does anybody have anything?
I have a couple of them.
Sure.
And they're not really complaints, it's just that if Derek could come up and explain how he did the cleanup this weekend, because I work in the church, we've been getting a lot of calls. Oh, Daryl. Oh, I'm sorry, Daryl. Daryl, Daryl, I'm sorry. Because there's a lot of confusion and people are upset and I know they're calling him and they're calling me, so can you explain a little bit more, Daryl?
Can you hear? Okay. Wow. Oh. Okay, how about now? Okay. So, yes, we had a cleanup last weekend. One, it was very successful.
Just talk over it?
Yeah.
Okay. You can just turn it off and talk, you're loud. It'll all come on. The recording's on.
So, we cleaned up Exeter Garden for the school progress. We are close to two classes. And so, some of the fallings we're receiving practically more of the areas that are already maxed. That area we cleaned up, I think it's November 12th. And then we'll take care of the rest of that area. As much as the neighborhood is waiting to spread out, all the way back to UPS, we were walking highway, moving highway. We had to cut it into two, because we were making it possible. Actually, as of today, we're still in the neighborhood, we've got all the stuff down. So I've had, I had three trucks on Monday and Tuesday, and I've had another few trucks on Monday. And then we've heard, I hope we can make it Monday. So, I understand we cleaned up that fall, and I think that's what we talked actually about with most of the fall we're getting, are people who are not actually in the areas that we cleaned up, other half of the campus. And so, I will give the staff, I mean, we're cleaning them, we're there in November, the summer block is already done. And so, I'll work around and figure out how to do better, how to maintain. But I need to, I need to make sure I.
Okay. What about on Dudley Street? When I went by there to UPS, I saw a lot on Dudley. Did y'all pick up Dudley too?
Didn't we pick up all the way UPS?
To the UPS, yeah, because it was on the UPS.
Yeah. It's right across, you cannot know the house except, uh, not. So, yes, we need to turn it, get the work out. But not everybody is, just in that small, small park, now we get to order, there are mass things down. Some of the president's, um, working on what parts, I think. I do want to thank, you know, we had Scott there, Walmart there, uh, and that park there, the next one coming out. We had a little bit, I would beg you to, I should hope we could go into the property three times or, I don't know. Just me, you, my name.
Well, I appreciate all the work that y'all did, it's just the information. I just wanted to know, make sure that, you know, we had encompassed the area we said we were, because we went and knocked on the doors and told them we're picking up their trash. Some of these are elderly people that had their family members or the grandkids and stuff coming clean up, and that's what I was hearing, so. I appreciate it. The other thing is, I don't know who to address this question to, but all of a sudden in my neighborhood, I'm playing one, two, three red light. There's stop signs in every corner in Brentwood, I'm not Brentwood, in the Bronx and territory. They're temporary, because there's little stop signs, but every corner has got one. And I was told to ask, so I just wanted to know. All right, did you notice that a couple of nights ago? I mean, they just appeared. I'd seen the traffic control people out there and I thought they were just fixing the stop signs. You know, I mean, the signs of the neighborhood, you know, because it kind of faded. And I thought, okay, good. But then when I came home that night, I saw a little stop sign here, so I said, you know what? I'm gonna drive through the whole neighborhood. There's about five or six more stop signs in the neighborhood. Okay. Are you asking for more? No, I'm asking why. And I know some people will say, well, lucky you. The one where it should be at, should be on Palmetto, because a while ago when I was leaving, I backed up and there was a truck flying through there, because there, there is no stop sign there. And I would have thought, if anywhere is, you know, there should have been one there, because I think, I mean, people fly. But, yeah, are they going to be permanent? It's all I want to know, because they're, right now, they're, they're short. And they have stands on the bottom, like somebody's testing us for something, but just.
Maybe they're just for cars, and if you have a truck, you don't have to worry about it.
Or you could even. I don't know if they're going to come do construction or fix potholes or something. I'm just asking, because maybe because of the upcoming construction that's going to be on Ben Wilson, if that's why they're putting them there, or.
So.
I'm not complaining, I'm just asking, because they told me to ask.
If Ken doesn't have an answer for you right now, he'll get an answer while we're in this meeting. And by the end of this meeting, we'll, we'll get you, we'll get you an answer.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have anything? I have two items. One, thanks, just invite that I told, for Saturdays, I would make sure that all y'all knew about their celebration, not this Saturday, but next Saturday. And it's 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, we're celebrating 140 years. Miss Solis is going to read the proclamation about one o'clock. The second one is just an ARPA fund discussion. Kind of put it, God with Jesus this week and just got where we are on everything. We're gonna need to finalize this either, probably not Tuesday, I don't think it's going to be on the.
It's on the agenda.
Oh, is it? Okay. Got it on the agenda for Tuesday to kind of look through this, but I also visited with Victoria College, because right now they're on the outside looking in for that renovation project downtown. It's not really Victoria College, but their foundation that runs the Welder Center for the Performing Arts. They're gonna build a taxi stand behind it, the taxi stand that was behind it. Turns out it was originally some electrical services building, electrical generation, because Texas Historical Commission pitched in and is providing funding also for the project.
It was never a feeding station?
No. I know, that's what I would have thought too.
Yeah, because of the way the highways.
Anyway, so hopefully this gives you enough information to review. I'd just like us to have a good, good discussion, who's in, what's in, what's out, and that we can give direction to Jesus and the team on where we think the money ought to be spent.
I do have it on the agenda for Tuesday, it's the City Managers Report, and I'll prepare a short presentation just to provide some brief history on just how we landed on, how we did, right? And it was important also to get this information out there today to confirm some of our individual conversations, because some of these projects are, the money is included in the CIP specifically for some of those projects that are in the district project. So, it's important to get this in front of you today, but definitely on Tuesday would be an opportunity to give more of an official green light for us, so we can proceed accordingly. That way we can, in short order, meaning in April, we can bring the council the actual contracts for the Phase One of the INI study, the Phase One, just to get it upgraded, we can really start finalizing this thing, check them, check them off the list. And we are, and I am beginning to work with Thomas as well on developing agreements that we would be able to use with our community partners. And I've begun having one-on-one meetings with the leadership group from these various entities, just to kind of talk through what some of those elements, some of those, if you will, requirements would be, stipulations, triggers, et cetera in those contracts. So, we're working it, but more to come on Tuesday. In the version that I passed out, there was a pending confirmation there for Rice Kitchen. So that's a conversation that we should have. Rice Kitchen will be providing us a formalized letter confirming their desire to stay in the neighborhood. So, more to come on that.
So, what you're saying is they're not willing to move?
Correct. They, we, we've been having conversations with them about encouraging them to be open to relocating Rice Kitchen. We've shared, you know, stats with them about crime rates and just other issues that arise in that neighborhood. They had remained open, and then our most recent, I guess, attempt came after, you know, we confirmed supporting Salvation Army. Because they did, they had conveyed that if they were to move, they'd prefer to be close to Salvation Army in that new day center that Salvation Army is proposing. So we thought that by communicating to them that we, that it was looking likely that we would support the Salvation Army project, that that might, you know, cause them to be interested in it, but they reaffirmed their position just yesterday that they want to stay in the neighborhood. So, we had tentatively allocated those funds, and so we would need to decide if we want to.
Reallocate.
Reallocate them, or, or what we want to do with them, but. And I intend on, you know, providing a couple of options on Tuesday, just based off of some of the other projects that were submitted, and then that way you can at least have, you know, a dialogue about options. Okay. We can talk about it. You want me to talk about it? So we, so I'm not sure how, well, I'm not sure how public this is, but at this point, it is what it is. But the airport, yeah, the airport received a official notice from SkyWest that SkyWest will be submitting a 90-day, that's a technicality, but they're submitting a 90-day notice to the FBA that SkyWest is pulling out of dozens of communities.
Twenty-nine in total.
Victoria being one of them. The SkyWest leadership has communicated to, or our leadership, that they intend to stay operating until a new airline can come in and provide air service. And that could be six months, that could take however long that takes, they appear to be committed to staying until then. That 90-day sort of trigger is simply just because that's just the requirement that they have to. So they don't intend, you know, 90 days to just disappear. So, we'll see what the, what the airport decides to do on that front. Obviously, from a communication standpoint, it's important that everybody understand and we'll try and promote this as much as we can through our means, that even though officially everything is going to read as a 90-day notice, that they actually will remain operational until a new airline comes in. Like I said, that could take obviously longer than 90 days, so that'll probably be the most sort of difficult part to communicate and a message to get across, that everybody will see a 90-day notice, but the likelihood should be here longer than that, so the airport can reposition to a different airline.
Yeah, we still need to fly in October, whatever you book. And hopefully expect it to be there.
And do you want to, do you want me to ask Lenny to be at the council meeting on Tuesday?
That's a.
I mean, Tu- Tuesday will have a more, obviously we'll have a greater public audience, because Tuesday's meeting is more, is live, so. I know, it's, it is on the County Commissioners' Court Agenda on Monday, for them to discuss this topic as well. So, we can turn, turn around and have a conversation on Tuesday if you'd like.
Sure. Yeah, we can do it under items from council.
Yeah, I know.
We can ask for it. You'll reach out to Lenny?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, any other items from council? All right, we'll close that and open up citizens' communication. All right.
Everybody's at the Bethel Award thing.
All right. I did have one question, but I see it's on the CIP list. Somebody was complaining about North Street being.
Okay, we'll get.
Roller coaster.
We'll cover it in that deal. Close citizens' communication, and we will get Todd up here to, or sorry, Mr. Jerris up there to start our CIP update.
All right, Todd, come on. You do have some, obviously, documents in front of you that he will reference. We'll follow a very similar format to last time, where we'll begin talking about an update on existing projects and then delve into the CIP.
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor, council, how are y'all? So today's objective for the CIP update, I want to start off with a, a, provide you with a progress update on, on a current 2022 CIP projects. You've got a handout there in front of you that shows a Gantt chart. I've pinpointed a few projects and I'll show them on the screen here shortly, and we'll talk about those. But obviously, you're welcome to ask about any of the current projects we have going on right now. We'll do a quick recap of the December Council Workshop, and then we'll go into sort of the CIP development since, since our last meeting in December, sort of what's changed since then. And then beyond that, we'll, we'll kind of do a quick overview of the remaining four-year planning window of the CIP. That's also a handout that you have there, real colorful one. And then we'll go into a, sort of a streets discussion. I really like to highlight all of the street projects that are in the CIP, just as a refresher for, for everyone, in terms of the amount of streets, percentage, total miles, total funding, et cetera. And then we'll go into a thorough fair discussion, and then, and then kind of review our next steps moving forward. Okay, well. Okay. So, like I mentioned, we, we've, I've pinpointed a few projects here, and, and so these are reflective in your, in your handout. And so the.
The first, the first project that I wanted to discuss. James, that, that's actually, something's changed on there since we.
Which project are you trying to get to?
Anyway, so, I, I know I'm off the top of my head though. So what, the first one I want to point your attention to is the North Heights Phase Seven. That's the very first project on your list. That project is, right now, the design is, is, we're finishing up design. That's an in-house design on that project. So we're finishing up the, the streets portion. Right now, the, the Phase Seven utilities of that, of that project are about 85% complete, so we should be taking this project, or bringing this project to council, or, or, excuse me, bidding it out in the next month or so, and then bring it to the council in, in, in May timeframe.
Can we time out there for a second?
Sure.
One of the things that we want to have a conversation about, that we're not necessarily prepared to discuss in detail, but I want to make sure we don't miss an opportunity, is that this last phase of North, of North Heights is the road that more directly leads you to Detar on one end, and Salvation Army on the other end. And it's the one that has, you know, the block that faces Rio Grande. And so I think a conversation around sidewalks might be warranted a little bit. We really haven't incorporated sidewalks in any of these North Heights projects. There had been some minor sidewalk work kind of around the backside of Detar, but I think it's an opportunity for us to just reevaluate and just make sure that we aren't missing an opportunity to improve sidewalks leading to the hospital, or maybe leading to the Salvation Army, especially the Salvation Army is going to potentially have a new day center. So just things that we want to be more mindful of as we start this project. Again, we're not prepared to specifically know, okay, this is how much we need to add here or there, but it's a conversa, pending conversation that we need to have. And in general, moving forward, I think it's important that council understands the different options, because North Heights is a perfect example, right? I mean, if you drive the neighborhood, you know, visualize what that neighborhood would look like had every phase included sidewalk. Obviously, that's an extra expense, but I just encourage you to drive the neighborhood and, and, and think what it would look like if the project would have incorporated sidewalks, because in general, when we look at neighborhood projects, there should probably at minimum just be a conversation to confirm with you on whether we should look at incorporating sidewalks or not. Obviously, that adds to the cost, and in some instances, might necessitate right-of-way acquisition, so it's not an easy solution, but we just want to make sure that you have options.
No, I'm not, I don't know the name of the street, but you're talking about the street that parallels Houston Highway and has one block north.
Correct.
San Antonio.
Nuances.
Nuances. Okay, where they're doing some utility work or something.
Correct. That's the first part of it. So they're replacing the utility lines, and then they'll come in and redo the street and some of the curb. But again, because that's the, the main road that leads to the hospital on one end, leads to Salvation Army on the other end.
Right.
And if everything goes, you know, from a development standpoint, the way that it ought to, you know, there are projects that would align themselves between this road and Rio Grande that would be more commercial. And so, just something to think about. Ken, did you want to add something to that?
We are putting that, we are designing it with sidewalks, right now, that's part of our last phase, and we would include that as additive.
Ken, did you want to add something to that?
We are putting that, we are designing it with sidewalks, right now, that's part of our last phase, and we would include that as additive.
Too late.
I guess, I'm trying to figure out the procedure then, if.
Hold on, hold on to that mic over here, just in case anybody else needs to speak at any point.
If, if we're designing it with the sidewalk, why would it then be an additive?
Because they're designing it with a sidewalk as of like last week?
Yes.
Okay.
We just started, we just got the question, and we said, you know what? Let's go ahead and design it with them, then we can put it as additive on the contract, because it'll be a separate item, and as we go through negotiations, if it's decided, oh my gosh, it's too much money, we could pull it out. So, we just want to go ahead and get the design out there and get it in, rather than having to change order.
Certainly from a road in that neighborhood, that's the most important road, probably have a sidewalk. Not saying any of the other roads weren't important, but this is certainly the most important.
Right. Just because of what you have on both ends.
Correct.
Yeah, and remember, that neighborhood reconstruction effort started before anybody here was on council.
This is the last phase of that project.
Yes.
Right. And this last phase will, will include, you know, all of the side streets, and it'll include, you know, the construction all the way to Rio Grande. So, it's Nuaces, and then off to both sides, all the way down.
Well, whoever thought about that, or whatever group thought about it, thank you. It was a good time to think about it, and I, I agree. Let's, let's look at that seriously.
Cool. All right.
So, so to continue with the sidewalk discussion, I wanted to turn your attention to, on the second page, project number 16 there, the Leary Lane Sidewalk Project. So, so that project, just to kind of give you an update, we're, we're pretty close to about 90% complete on the design of that project. We've, we've had the design for some time, but we've had some, we've run into some, some, some changes along the way in terms of easement discussions with some of the property owners. So we're currently working through those right now. Those, those easement documents are all in, in, potentially to be signed here in the next month or so, and so that project is looking to probably bid sometime in, in the May, end of May, June timeframe. So, so that project's moving along fairly, fairly quickly, hoping to have construction completed in the, in the summertime, so that way it doesn't affect the school year. The next project is the one right below that, that's the Traffic Signal Project. That's, that's another project that we, we still have outstanding, we're currently in design. Right now, that project's being designed in-house, and again, looking to bring that project to council sometime in roughly July timeframe. And then, wanted to give you all an update on the Duck Pond Project. That project is going to advertise this Sunday, so that'll be advertising for four weeks, and, and then we'll go through the opening of bids and, and negotiations beyond that. So, forecasting to bring that to council sometime in the May timeframe. And then lastly, Riverside Dog Park, that's the last project on the list. We're roughly 30% design on that project right now. We received some preliminary site plan documentation, but that project's moving along as expected, and again, hoping to advertise early or late, late May, early June on that project.
Mr. Jerris, on that one. You are incorporating, I hope, some type of dedication to Izzy.
Jason is shaking his head, yes, yeah, he's, he's kind of been following that project a little closer than I have, but yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Mayor, in one of our meeting, in our meeting this week, you had some questions about timelines associated with Crestwood.
Yes.
Can we talk about that for a second?
Sure.
Okay. Can, can you talk about that?
I can't.
And then it'll kick off into a conversation.
Sure. So, specifically Phase Two of Crestwood is, from an entire project standpoint, we're roughly 50% complete. However, from the, to break it down, the, the utilities or the underground is about 85% complete right now, so they should be done in about the next month or two, and then we'll go into the, to the street, you know, reconstruction at that point. So I think by the end of the year, we'll be done with that project? Yeah.
I, either, either Todd or Ken, can either of you speak to the process that the contractor follows with all of the different elements of the project? So is this one of those projects, for example, where, obviously, it's a multifaceted project, right, with utilities and whatnot? But is this a project that, you know, they finish a section, they move on, somebody comes back in? Can you talk a little bit about how they phase all of these different elements? Because part of the concern, quite frankly, is that this project just takes way too long, right? And there's this perception that, you know, this specific project, it's just dragging its feet, because it's, it almost kind of seems like one part of it has to be completely finished before one even starts, versus taking a sys, a more systematic approach, right? Whereas you move down the line, the next one's right behind you. And so it just creates a lot of issues in the communities with people's perceptions on how, how, what, how much of a priority is this project for the contractor, to be quite honest with you? So can we talk about what we know?
One, one of the things that we always try to do on, on a collector street, arterial street paving, is to maintain traffic. And with that project, we've got a water line on one side of the road, a sewer line on the other side of the road. We have storm sewer on both sides of the road and in the middle of the street. So it's got a little bit of everything. So as the contractor starts, one of the things that they want to start on first is a sanitary sewer, because that has to be set to that grade. So they start that, and they work on one side, they close the street partway, they work on that. Well, they can't work on the other side of the street on the water line or that storm sewer, because they'd have to close the road. So that's why it takes so long, is you've got, as, as Jesus was mentioning, you've got so many items in there, but to keep that, that. But to keep that, that roadway open, you can only work on this side. For instance, the sanitary sewer on this side, then they flip over, then they'll work on the water line. And then they'll flip back over and work on the, the, the storm. So it's, it's, the storm is usually the last one and that's what they're working on now. When they get all of that done, that's, that's when they breathe a little bit because paving is paving. And they just, they can work on the base, work on the paving. They'll be driving on concrete, then they'll work on the other side, finish the road. So that's where they're at right now. They've run into some issues where they were connecting to a water line and we found out that water line's leaking. And of all the ones, it happens to be the one that goes under Navarro. So that's going to be another slow process of getting that fixed and finding out where that leak is coming from. But as he explained, it's, it's so many items in that street, you can't just close the street, which we, that's what the contractors would prefer. You have to do it phases and steps.
Right. So, you know, my thinking behind the sequencing, right? Whatever's in the half of the road that's getting worked on. If they start at the, the Laurent end and they're working towards Navarro. If there's two utilities on that side, why do they wait until they get all the way to Navarro to go back to Laurent to start again on the next service? Why isn't there another crew following behind after they're a quarter of the way down the street and start working the other service?
The, and that's due to the fact of too many crews. One of them is contractor. He's under, you know, he's got so many people he can work with. And again, to, they can follow through, but a lot of times it's gonna, it's, it's just a fact of they want to finish that one item. They want to get the sanitary sewer done. And they gotta go back then in the beginning, a lot of times, and still put the service in, which means they can only go halfway across the street. Because if they go all the way across, they gotta close the road for every one of them. But it's just a matter of getting crews lined up and having too many people sometimes on the job. It gets way confusing.
Okay.
I wanted to talk about something related, so go ahead.
How are we, uh, what's the contracted end date?
Contracted end date and I would, I, don't quote me, but I believe it's next year. Actually, it's in twenty twenty-three. They have time to get it done.
That's the problem.
And that's what we want. We are pushing them, but we did not want to, every time you give that, you squeeze that contractor in time, you increase costs. Cause now they're gonna be pushing to close that road down or they're gonna, everything's a change order, so. We don't want to squeeze them too much, but we're also pushing them.
Yes, but I, you know what? My office is right there on it, so I see it and live it every day. I know there's plenty of days that they could be working, that there's no work going on, and I hope that we document that. So when we go back and look at bidding the next phase,
We can.
We can see the true value of what that number should be, these year and a half dates to build that section of roadway and utilities. I, I see them, they're not there and I know they're not there.
And that's one of our items that we always talk to the contractors is if you're not there and you come down to the end of the project and you don't have enough time and you're getting into liquidated damages, it's your own fault. You weren't there on days that you could have worked. So I understand.
Thank you.
The, the second part or what I'd like to also talk about is, um, and this impacts our expense also is, so we've got Crestwood shut down effectively or part of it shut down. We've got Airline shut down. So all of those side streets from Laurent over to Navarro have a lot of traffic on them. It's rained, uh, both the ones going east-west and the ones going north-south. There are potholes everywhere. And I haven't turned in all the streets to you, but I've turned in a couple and the crew's been out there. But, um, I mean, that, every time that we have construction like that, it impacts it. But I'd also like you to look at all of those streets. Um, some of them, it's at the intersection, some of them, it's the middle. But there are potholes coming up everywhere because of traffic.
We can do that. One thing I want to add to that, Airline and Mockingbird, they're gonna be working on them next week. They're gonna seal them and they're gonna put the overlay on them and put the temporary striping down and it's supposed to happen next week. So that will get those roads basically opened back up.
Yeah, pretty much going east-west in town is, what they, they say that's progress, so.
I can't leave Victoria College and hardly make it to my office. Um, yes, I, I echo what she said. That one street that's one off of Navarro, um, I guess to the east between Crestwood and Airline. Vine School's on there. Um, there's a stop sign there at Hospice.
Miski.
Miski, yes. It is just terrible.
Well, I'll put.
I don't know what we're gonna do about that long term because I don't know how many more times we can do it. It might have to be a small section that gets rebuilt or something.
I'll get those started in.
Thanks, Ken. Um, there's any, before we move on, any other questions, comments, concerns associated with any existing project? Or ongoing project, I should say?
Um, Dairy Road's in design, right? And we have that in, um, twenty-three's budget for rebuild?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do we, do we, do we have an answer on, that was the design that was gonna potentially incorporate replacing oh, a water line or not? Do we have an answer to that?
We have an answer, but I want to get back with the consultant, also discuss with our crews. We do have that it, it's close. And we're discussing options as far as can we just put a, like a, uh, cement sand cap over it? But I just, it's, we've got numbers that we're, we're gonna begin discussing on it.
Okay. Thank you.
When did you say North Street was gonna come up?
North Street comes up as part of a potential thoroughfare project. Or just thoroughfare in general.
Correct.
Later in the presentation.
Okay.
That was the first bullet we just got through?
Yes. That was, that was the first, yes.
You're the one asking all the questions.
All right.
So one of the things that I, I talked about was, uh, in our, in the recap or in the, uh, objective slide was, uh, I wanted to, uh, recap the, the changes that, um, that we discussed, uh, during the, uh, December workshop. Um, and so, um, I provided a, a, a slide here, um, that kind of shows the, the, you know, some of the projects that we, obviously in, in red there that you see that we took away or that we, uh, put on hold and we removed from the CIP, the funding. And then the projects that you see here with the, uh, in the black, those are the projects that we, um, those projects, if you remember, we needed additional, uh, they, they were, needed additional discussion, right? We had, we had some further investigation and so we had to discuss some scope changes to those projects. Uh, and we, so we presented those to you in, in, in December. So we'll go over them real quickly. Um, the first one is the, uh, Regional Waste Water Plant Clarifier Project. That was initially in the, in the CIP. Uh, we were gonna take care of the design in, in, uh, fiscal year twenty-two. Um, however, at this point, we, we have, uh, put that project on hold to have a more thorough discussion of, of, uh, maybe a, a, a complete, uh, revamp of that facility. Um, so kind of look at what, what some, what are our options for, for that facility? Um, instead of just revamping or, or rebuilding our, our clarifiers that are there now. Um, we, uh, the second project there in twenty-two is the Power Secure Generator at the Waste Water Treatment Plant. Uh, we were talking about, uh, potentially adding funding to, uh, to sort of pay off that, that, uh, that generator. Um, but we talked about in December that there were some additional priorities that popped up and so we removed, um, that, that funding and reallocated it elsewhere to higher priorities. The Environmental Services Building, um, again, we put that project on hold, um, just due to the fact that we're currently, uh, going through the facilities assessment study right now. Uh, moving to, uh, fiscal year, uh, twenty-three. Again, Power Secure Generator removed. Uh, Riverside Golf Course Greens Project, uh, we removed that, the funding for that project because you may remember that we're, we are, uh, applied for a grant for that project.
Which, which we received official word this week that it's not, we, we did not receive the grant for the greens renovation.
Mike, can you make a call?
Yeah, that's right.
Um, moving along, Fire Station Five relocation. Uh, again, we, we, uh, we deem that project to be, uh, sort of on hold for the time being. Uh, as we look at funding for potential public safety building, et cetera. Um, uh, Regional Waste Water Clarifier, again, that was just the, uh, remember, recall, we had four, uh, five clarifiers and, and so that was just, uh, the first year was designed and then this year was, was essentially, uh, rebuilding the first clarifier. Um, Delmar Mill and Overlay Project. This was the project that was from Houston Highway to, I have, I have Rio Grande there, but it was east Rio Grande. Uh, so it takes you just over the railroad tracks there. Uh, if you, you may remember that project, we, we, uh, did the soil borings and we, and we just determined that that project was not, uh, that the mill overlay application was not gonna work for that project based on the, the vibratory equipment. The base could not handle it. So Lone Tree Acres Drainage, uh, this was a project that we, that we, uh, talked about that had some scope change. And so we needed to allocate some additional funding, uh, to sort of widen and, and increase the length of the, of the outfall in that area. Dairy Road Reconstruction, uh, like Jesus mentioned, we had the, the additional water line cost. Uh, Castle Hills Seal Coat, that was an additional cost there to the, uh, residential street maintenance program. And then Tanglewood Phase One, uh, Utilities, that was, uh, just adding the, the, uh, the funding that was needed to go ahead and complete that project out. Remember we had brought in, on August, we had brought the Tanglewood design to you. Uh, but, but we needed to then therefore, uh, add funding for the actual construction of these, the utilities and, uh, and streets. So you'll see that here. That's the utilities in twenty-three and you'll see the streets here, uh, in, uh, in twenty-four, uh, right here. So again, these are just some of the same projects. Uh, they were just, we had funding stretched out between twenty-three and twenty-four on some of these projects. So they're, they're essentially the same, same projects we just discussed. Um, so this is sort of the, the delta of what we talked about in December. Uh, I wanted to include this side slide, uh, because ultimately, uh, at December, we ended here at the hundred and twenty-one million, um, which, which was for the entire five-year, uh, CIP.
So on this, the clarifiers at all aren't an issue anymore?
No, they're definitely an issue and we definitely want to address them. Um, but you may recall that we, um, explored the feasibility of, of pursuing a, um, contract with Schneider for performance contracting for the facility that would have revamped the entire facility. Had we gone through that energy savings contract, um, it would have included the clarifiers. It would have included other improvements that are needed at the Regional Waste Water Treatment Plant. So we did not want to proceed with these anticipating that they would be part of a, more of a package, um, deal. Um, since then though, we've had conversations about how can we enhance our own internal CIP project management team? And we are now leaning more towards developing, um, definitely a holistic view to improvements at the Regional Waste Water Treatment Plant, but rather than outsourcing it to anybody, we're considering doing that ourselves. Um, so for example, had we contracted with a company like Schneider, you know, we would have had to have paid them a percentage, right, for management of all of that. Well, we're developing a mechanism in-house, um, that we'll present to you soon where it does something very similar, but we're charging ourselves to do that work. And so rather than paying somebody, a third party to manage these projects, why not pay ourselves, build our team in-house and have more control over the management of some of these projects? So anyway, so we are rethinking definitely our strategy as it relates to the holistic improvements needed at the Regional Waste Water Treatment Plant. But ultimately the improvements are needed, um, and we will be looking to incorporate them back into the CIP uh, in time, once we fine tune our approach. But they're definitely still needed.
I, I was just, you know, when they go out this far till twenty-five, twenty-six and we're still taking them out, we know we're gonna do them before then, aren't we?
Correct, but keep in mind that every year we have an opportunity to adjust the CIP, right? So for example, next year going into fiscal year twenty-four, we'll have an opportunity to add projects or move projects or remove projects. So, um, that's kind of where, where we envision making some of those changes. Also, keep in mind that typically in May is when council, um, I guess we provide more of a complete picture of what the remaining CIP program looks like. So there is a chance that by May, we would have an opportunity to find, finalize our approach to the Regional Waste Water Treatment Plant and recommend incorporating elements of it in the budget at some point in the planning window, even if it's not fiscal year twenty-three, right?
Um, but then if we add it back in later, are we gonna be just bumping some other projects?
You, you rose your hand. Yes.
Hey, thank you. Uh, no, we won't be bumping anybody. You haven't seen everything. One thing that I do strategize, remember that revenue, bond debt capacity, cash flow, we're not tapping all that out yet. That's because one of the issues we have, how's that gonna develop over the years? Currently, Ken, we'll go out and get a consultant to come up with a strategy plan over how we can phase these seven, eight million dollars over the phases, which will include the clarifier and everything else. Boom, boom. But the funding won't be there. The idea is like, as Jesus mentioned years ago, we don't want to push things back. So that money's still there to figure out. There's still some gaps we've got to fill and that's one.
And, and one of the things we're doing is we've already contacted a consultant to give us a preliminary, what I would call it, kind of like we did the SCADA system, where they look at the holistic SCADA of the city, water, wastewater lift stations. They're gonna do the same thing at the wastewater plant to get us a preliminary idea of what really is needed and a cost. So we're already working on that.
And in Gilbert's presentation, Mayor, to your, to, I guess, both of your points. In Gilbert's presentation will be, which will be after this one, um, he'll have some charts to kind of refresh everybody's mind on what that debt capacity looks like in the outer years. So. Okay.
I was gonna just, go ahead, move on.
We'll get to it.
Sorry.
Okay.
Put me in coach.
Somebody cut him off.
Okay, so, uh.
All right, let's move on.
So as we move forward, uh, I, I mentioned that I wanted to sort of discuss, um, some development of the CIP since the last time we met in, in December. And so, um, these next six slides here, um, will reflect that. So as we go through, um, first we'd like to talk about Nursery Drive Reconstruction. Uh, and we, we did talk about this project in, in December. Um, and again, this is just finishing out Nursery Drive from, uh, Lake Forest, uh, which is, which is the yellow here. So from Lake Forest out to the city limits. Um, and, and right now that project, we have that project in, in fiscal year twenty-three, uh, for five hundred and thirty-six thousand. Um, this portion of, of nursery is, is in pretty bad shape. Um, it's, it's failing. Um, and, and we've done, you know, multiple pothole repairs and et cetera on, on that, on that, uh, street, so. Secondly, we have, um, McGruder Drive and, and Lingo Lane Reconstruction. Um, I'd like to just kind of add that not only nursery, but also these streets here, um, they are, they are at a less than forty PCI score. Um, so just, just, just FYI. Um, but again, so in, uh, in, in December, we had mentioned bringing, or you, excuse me, we added, uh, we had Ner- uh, McGruder in December and we talked about this portion here from Country Club, uh, all the way to Lingo Lane. Um, so however, since then, we've just, we discussed, uh, potentially sort of phasing this project and going ahead and including Lingo Lane as part of the, the, uh, CIP. And so that would be roughly, uh, one, one million dollars there in fiscal year twenty-three. And again, that's reconstruction from Country Club all the way to the railroad tracks. Um, and then potentially going ahead and, and, and including a phase two in the future, uh, to go ahead and from the railroad tracks all the way to, uh, to Main Street, um, as, as a phase two, so.
Question on that.
Couple thoughts.
On that section of road, um, how's that cost compared to what's needed for Spring Creek? It's traveled more frequently and we've already passed over for, um, maintenance because they won't support it.
Isn't Spring Creek?
Spring Creek Reconstruction is, is also, uh, in twenty-three.
It's in the CIP already.
It's, uh, project number thirty-three.
Yeah, if you flip on this, this document, if you flip through the second page, project thirty-three, uh, Spring Creek Reconstruction made to Country Club. That's in the CIP for twenty-three. And so part, part of what, what we want to, and eventually Todd will get, will get to it, but we probably don't have a lot of time to go through it in detail, is that one of the, you know, one of the feedbacks that I've got or some of the feedbacks. but we probably don't have a lot of time to go through it in detail is that one of the, you know, one of the feedbacks that I've got, or some of the feedback I've gotten from, from some of you is that, you know, we don't spend a lot of time when we have these conversations reminding you on all the projects that are already in the CIP. So it creates this perception that we're not doing anything. Um, but that's why we want to give this document to you each time we meet because there's literally a ton of streets that are already in the CIP that are already planned to take place. That's why we focus these conversations on just what's changed or what are we adding? Um, but we recognize that sometimes by simply just glossing over, you know, these streets, like it creates a perception that we're not, you know, that we're not doing anything. Um, so I really encourage you to go through the document, you know, to really understand, you know, all of the streets that were already in the five-year CIP window. Remember that this five-year CIP window, we have a target of hitting 112 miles of streets versus the last five years was only 75.
True.
So we are doing a lot of streets. Anyway.
And just to add to that, I hadn't got to it yet, but on that document, everything that you see in green, on, on the, each row that's green is, is what we're talking about up here on the screen right now. So, uh, it kind of helped you follow along, but everything else is, is pretty much, you know, not changed or something we've already talked about, um, before, so.
Todd, okay, so the green is either the change to, to add or to take away?
Yeah, correct. It's just changed in general. So you'll notice there that, for example, some of them have been moved. Um, so yeah, the green is simply just to reflect there's a change. But what's in white has been in the CIP since we first created this five-year CIP program, which would have been last year.
Correct.
Number, number 32 says residential street program. Would you elaborate, please?
Sure, that is, um,
Castle Hills West.
Yeah, well, not all Castle Hills West, yes sir, but, uh, um, yeah, that, that's the, the seal coat projects, uh, residential seal coat projects, uh, including Castle Hills West.
Is there a list of those somewhere?
I apologize, I don't, I don't have the entire list. Um,
But we'll, we'll, we'll get it.
Yeah, I can certainly get that.
And it's in the book, but we'll, we'll, we'll send it out as a refresher though as well.
Yeah, we can certainly email that, email it out to everyone. Um, but those, again, those projects, uh, are, they're, they're in the CIP book. They haven't, the only one that's changed was, was Castle Hills, but everything else is, is still the same as it's always been since we created, uh, the CIP.
I know you, you send things out and we get a lot of stuff. Is this the latest one? So it's a five-year 2022 to 26?
Yeah, that's the one from last year. So this, this May-June, you'll get a new one.
Okay, I mean, it's just like for tonight, I know we all have these at home and so you can take a look at it before they say.
And you noticed that that one very specifically says fiscal year 22 addition?
Yes.
So there'll be a fiscal year 23 addition that gets printed and distributed this May and June to incorporate, you know, all of the different changes, the additions, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
And, and the residential streets are, are in here too.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am, they are, yeah. Okay, so the next, uh, development that I want to talk to you about is the Deleon Plaza Improvement Project. Um, you may recall that this project was identified, uh, in the downtown master plan, um, as a strategic capital improvement project. Um, this project, uh, contains or consists of, of modifying the curb lines and paving on North Forest Street, uh, to accommodate sort of an enhanced pedestrian experience. Uh, the project comes with a, a performance pavilion, um, a, a public restroom, storage building, uh, some electrical enhancements, um, in terms of a signal, signal modification, um, storm sewer enhancements, um, a, a nice water feature design and then some audio, video and security features. Uh, currently, right now, we are in the process of negotiating, uh, the design or engineering proposal, uh, with, with, uh, Freezing Nichols. And, uh, we have an intent to, to bring, if we go ahead and execute that project or that contract, the intent would be to bring a preliminary design, uh, to council, uh, which would include a, a 30% cost estimate of, of what the construction of that project could be. Right now, we're currently budgeting it for 2.5 million in the, in the fiscal year 23, uh, portion of the CIP.
And you'll notice, if you're looking at the sheet, this is project 62 at the bottom and it's in green. And you'll notice source of funds, how we break it down. And this is why it was important to get out to you, you know, where, what we've planned to recommend for ARPA funds because from that 2.5, 1 million of that 2.5 is an ARPA fund recommendation. And so you'll see that source of funds just as you look at any of these projects.
When you're looking at this design, when you're getting, you know, if we get a contra- or a firm on board, can you please ask them to take into account the possibility of adding some type of monument or statue or something like in front of the flags?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
What would the, um, I see something about a performance pavilion. What would the impact of the gazebo with that?
Um, so the perfor- none. The performance pavilion is more, you know, visualize where we typically put a portable stage, uh, which is on the street, right? Um, closest to, of course, the one O'Connor. The idea is that since, since this is going to, you know, change all of that design, the idea is to construct or build, um, something that's more permanent. And that way it's more, it's better outfitted with audio, visual, you know, all, all technology for all the different types of events that take place there.
But not, no impact on the gazebo?
No impact on the gazebo, no.
We can have a stage that rises up.
Yeah, that's right. Where you come out from the middle, right? Yeah, yeah, and it goes all the way up.
Do you want me to take note of that or?
Just don't need a water table.
So, um, moving on, so we have, uh, in, in project number 63 there, as we move down, you'll see the, the water meter replacement program. Um, so, so we had allocated funding for, uh, to replace our, our, our current, uh, census water meters in batteries. Uh, the city has roughly 23,000, uh, water meters ranging from three-quarter inch up to 10-inch, uh, throughout the city. Uh, the current meters have, have reached their intended lifespan, um, and today's, today's batteries, uh, within those meters, uh, have a longer lifespan up to 25 years. Um, so we're, we're proposing to, to allocate 500,000 in the CIP in fiscal year 23. Um, and then we also have an additional, uh, budget, uh, M and O budget of 168,000. I think we typically have reoccurring every year that, and those, those, that, that budget could be also be used to kind of supplement some of these additional replacements. Um, the cost to replace one of these three-quarter inch meters with a battery is roughly $306. Uh, that would get us somewhere in the tune of, of 1600 or so, uh, meters the first year. Um, and so, so the intent would be to continue this program, uh, each and every year, uh, until all the meters and, and batteries ha- have been replaced.
What, why, uh, how does a water and wastewater fund fit into that? Would, to me, that seems like that would be a water and wastewater expense.
It is.
It is.
It is.
Well, I'm seeing M and O revenue fund.
Will they have?
Well, it's the end cash part of their fund.
The 168,000, uh, I think what you mean, that's the budget side.
Yep.
That's in the regular budget. We do 168,000. So you add 168,000 to budget that we try to do all the time. We augment it with additional $500,000. To do a total of 10% per year.
That's the CIP.
Yeah, the, the 168,000 is, is used to change the meters out throughout the year as they fail or, or something comes, you know, but the CIP portion or that funding, the additional 500,000 will allow us to do even more.
And the ex- and the existing M and O budget for the utility, uh, department is obviously funded by the water wastewater fund.
So when we're doing a project like Crestwood and we're replacing all the water, are we putting in new meters?
Can't answer that one.
Our intent is yes, but currently we cannot get meters. So, but the intent is yes, we always replace the meters. Correct.
And I think in previous projects we have, when we can get the meters. Like North Heights. Okay.
So Public Safety Building, um, again, you'll see, uh, we've got that listed in the, in, uh, the fiscal year 23, uh, page there, project number 56, um, 3.475 million. Uh, that is, uh, that, that's budgeted for 23 in terms of land and, and, and design cost. Um, I think currently right now we're finalizing that scope and, and fee with the architect and, uh, potentially, uh, looking at design completion at the end of fiscal year 23. Um, again, estimated construction costs, um, we have not included that in the CIP, but, uh, but currently we're looking somewhere in, in the, in the range of 25 to 30 million and, uh, potentially, you know, a timeline or of advertising in, uh, early 2024 and then a sort of construction timeline to be determined after that, so.
And we expect, um, in May or by May to, to hopefully work with you to finalize that funding strategy for that program or for that building. And so Gilbert and I have been finalizing what our options would be to show with you during an upcoming one-on-one meeting and then eventually obviously as a group, um, because we do want to obviously as part of the finalizing of the 23 edition of the CIP, um, already account for, you know, what that construction looks like. Um, because we think it's important to capture everything together because I think it would be, um, what's the word, challenging if we simply just allocated for the design, but didn't account for the construction. Just makes sense that if we're going to do it, we just, obviously this is all spread out through, not the same year, but at least account for it. So we're working on the, on that recommendation. Um, I will say briefly that on Tuesday at our council meeting and executive session, I'll provide, um, a detailed update, um, but I'm excited about it, so I'll just say what I can now. But, so without getting into details, you know, we had a preferred site. Um, council had authorized, uh, me, uh, up to a certain point for price of this preferred site. Um, and, uh, this week that site became available. Um, and it appears that the seller has, um, agreed, um, to the max that you authorized me to go. Um, and so, um, if that's the case, then I'll, I'll confirm that on Tuesday and then we'll just proceed accordingly after that, but it's looking positive as of today. So that's good news there.
Well, I have a question. On that project, um, the 1.6 of that number was from grants and other. Remind me where that?
Sure, so grants and others. So out of the 1.6, 1 million is ARPA. So if you look at your ARPA sheet,
Okay.
Um, there's a million there. The 600,000 come from a variety of, of land sales. And so we've incorporated, for instance, the, the money that we're getting for the sale of the 15 acres that council just approved, we're putting it in there.
Okay.
Um, the sale for the property off of Hoover that sold last year, we've put it in there. Um, and so we kind of just puts together pots of different money to kind of get to, uh, to the amount. So that's what that is.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
All right, so we'd like to have just a quick, quick mill and overlay discussion. Um, so we've got some projects here that, that we've, that have included in the, in your handout. Um, for example, if we turn to fiscal year 23, we kind of follow along. Uh, but so I wanted to kind of give you just a, a refresher. The mill and overlay projects, uh, that we had originally selected for the CIP were, uh, we, we followed the cost optimization approach, uh, and the recommendations from IMS. Uh, further investigation, uh, into, into these mill and overlay projects, um, we've, we've kind of made some changes based on, um, some priorities, um, in, in, in the remaining four-year planning windows. So I want to go over those with you right now. So first off, we have, uh, East Larkspur, uh, mill and overlay from Navarro to Placido Benavides. Uh, we had that project originally listed in fiscal year 23, uh, where we are proposing to move it to, uh, fiscal year 24. Uh, Miore Lane, uh, mill and overlay, that's from San Houston all the way to Stockbauer. Uh, that, that project was originally in fiscal year 23 and we're proposing to move it out to, uh, fiscal year 26. So you'll see, um, in, in your sheet there on, on fiscal year 23, I've got a, a white box there on, on project 36 and 38. Um, and I'm, and I've provided that box in, in the VSTDC funding portion, uh, just to show you that that's where that, that was where that funding was initially at. Uh, it's still in the CIP, it's just now been moved out a couple of years. Southwest Ben Jordan, number three there, uh, that is right there.
Hold on, Todd.
Yep. Sorry, oh, sorry, go ahead.
How, how do, how would you do the mill and overlay of Miore?
So it's a, oh, I can't talk.
You would, you would basically, we would grind that outside edge and yes, it is concrete. Grind the outside edge, maybe two foot away from that curb. And then we would just overlay the whole street, seal it and overlay it.
So it wouldn't, it's called milling that overlay?
Right, we, we, and, and in that portion, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't mill the whole road. We would just mill that outside portion so you'd have a lip where that asphalt can, can lock up against.
And then you'd,
And then we'd overlay the whole thing.
Interesting.
It's a thing.
Well, it's a nice, it's a nice base.
On, on the mill and overlay stuff, I think we, there's some confusion this past week on what we're doing on certain roads because, um, this is really a fairly new process that we've restarted from mill and overlay. And most people don't understand when they see a, a decent section of road that's going to get a mill and overlay, that it's a maintenance project, it's not a reconstruct, even though it's going to be a really nice finished road. Uh, just need to continue getting that word out and talking to everybody to make sure everybody understands the difference.
And, and I guess I'm still on Miore because it is a concrete street. It's been there for a while, but it's, um, so why does it need a mill and overlay?
Well, same reason why other streets.
Just for maintenance.
Correct. I mean, the same reason why we want to mill and overlay any street, which is we want to extend its life. We want to prevent it from getting to a point where we would need to completely reconstruct it and then it'd be even more expensive to fix.
Just checking to make sure he agrees. Thank you.
I, I always considered it, some of the reason that we have had to do so many reconstructions is because of fast budget issues where they weren't able to do maintenance. And if you defer that maintenance, it just deteriorates your road sooner. So now that we have everything under control and we can have an enhanced, uh, maintenance program for our streets, it's a good time to do it, hopefully. Set a good foundation for years to come.
And I ha- I have a real nice slide here in the future, of slides here that, that really highlight all of the, the mill and overlays and thoroughfare streets that we're doing in the CIP kind of all together in one. And so it really, really shows that, you know, the maintenance, uh, portion of, of the CIP and how, and how that's reflected.
And for the sake of time,
Yep.
Um, I'll just mention, focus, you know, on the ones that impact fiscal year 23. Um, and since we're in the conversation of, you know, mill and overlays and, you know, what people perceive things to be, you know, John Stockbauer is a project that, um, you know, realistically should be thought of as a thoroughfare project, but, but from a mill, mill and overlay standpoint, right? Because you don't want to, you don't want to let John Stockbauer deteriorate to the point where you have to then completely reconstruct it, which we could probably all agree would be ridiculously expensive, you know, to do it. And so, um, the, I, the note here is that there was a portion of John Stockbauer that was in the fiscal year 23 based off of the IMS recommendation. And keep in mind that the IMS recommendation, you know, that it's a very scientific approach, but that could be good and bad, right? Because, you know, they're taking block sections. Um, and oftentimes, you know, that might not make sense for just common sense, right? So for example, it had the section of John Stockbauer, you know, between Salem and Mockingbird fiscal year 23 and Rio Grande and Airline in fiscal year 25. And it's kind of like, well, once we actually look at it from a more practical standpoint, will it make sense to kind of sequence it better than the way that technically was recommended? And if we take that approach, then it makes sense that if we just strategically start, you know, at, uh, uh, excuse me, at, at Rio Grande and then just slowly but surely move our way up, well, then it starts making more sense to everybody involved that we're slowly but surely taking John Stockbauer and mill and overlaying it. And that's why the change of moving the Salem to Mockingbird piece out to a future year, moving up the one on Rio Grande and Airline, which if you drive the stretch, the Rio, the Rio Grande to Airline piece is probably the one that you would think is in worse condition, um, because of this. And so it just makes sense for us to adjust it, right? So.
And I just, I included the, the PCI scores there just to sort of kind of reiterate what Jesus was saying that even though the PCI scores show to be the same, um, because that's what IMS said, if you drive that portion, i- i- you know, anybody would think that the Rio Grande to Airline portion is actually the one that needs to come first, so. So this take, this, uh, slide here is, is essentially the first page of your handout. And so the reason for this, uh, this slide is to, uh, essentially just, just identify, uh, where we're at in terms of a, a total CIP. Uh, this includes the, the, this includes all five years. Uh, I just added 2022 in there. Uh I just added twenty twenty-two in there as a as sort of a reference. Um however, the remaining documents that you have there behind behind the first page just reflect twenty-three to twenty-six, so that four-year window.
Can I add something?
And you'll notice that um in December, where we left it off for the five-year planning window was one twenty-five?
One twenty-one.
I'm sorry, one twenty-one. And so you could see how much it jumped up by adding different projects. Which is okay, um but we just want to be mindful of of that.
And 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 a lot of that, too, uh was was some grant projects that that we we add that we added uh in back in December, we had mentioned, we had talked about, hey, we're gonna go ahead and put all these grant projects uh in the CIP um because we wanted to to show our our match, uh and allocate for that match funding. So some of the some of that is is uh is those grant projects as well, so.
Mayor, the question you had earlier about skipping, actually, if you look at this column here, nine point six million dollars. That's over the next four years. That's the cash that we haven't had allocated from the cash capacity that we need to figure out how the the plant would come and play with this and how many years, okay?
Any questions on any of the of the changes, just moving around? I again, I just really encourage you to go through the document. Um and we could talk about it our one-on-one. We recognize it's a lot of information. But hopefully, having this conversation, you know, every quarter, you know, over time, you know, it it kind of comes together.
So these next couple of slides are are essentially the same documents you have there. I'll I'll pass through these. So wanted to uh really quickly just kind of reiterate, uh kind of go back to what the mayor said about about streets. Um and so I kind of put this slide together here to to really show um where we're at in terms of 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 street projects. Um currently, right now, in the in the five-year CIP, uh we've got roughly eighty million dollars worth of of street projects um that we're that we're uh budgeting for. Uh now cur- obviously, currently, some of those are ongoing right now. Um so basically, that's roughly fifty perc- fifty-six percent of our entire CIP is um a a street type of project. Um so here you have the total of the hundred and forty-two million, and again, this is roughly eighty million here. Totally fifty-six percent. So on the bar chart, basically, the thoroughfare streets are are funding is is in the red and residential is is here in the orange, and then these are other projects to include parks and and public safety building, et cetera.
That does not include construction costs for a first responder headquarters?
Correct, it is not.
Does not.
It is not.
Right, yeah, the the this entire chart reflects that number, which is what you see on the on the first page of of your document there. Um so you guys may recall seeing this slide here, uh just wanted to go back over it again. Um this is updated, this map is updated currently right now as to reflect exactly what's in your handout. All of Castle Hills West is in red, and uh Tanglewood Phase One, Nursery and McGruder and Lingo. Uh so you can see here, back in uh twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one, uh that five-year period, we did seventy-five miles of street projects. Uh currently, in the five-year CIP as it is right now, we we're we're right around a roughly a hundred and five miles. So so one of the notes to to kind of look at here is is over that ten-year span, out of the three hundred and twenty-six miles of roadways within the city limits, we're gonna address a hundred and eighty of those miles. That's fifty-five percent of the entire city.
And just real quick, just to reiterate, our goal is a hundred and twelve miles. And so just because we're at one oh five, you know, doesn't mean that, you know, we're not gonna meet our goal. And that's why every year, you know, is an opportunity to add projects to eventually, by the time twenty twenty-six comes around, you know, we get to that one twelve. Um and staff, they probably get tired of me saying it because for me, it's a very big deal that we try and reach that goal, because I think it sends a strong message to the public that this five-year planning window, we've increased the amount of streets that we were addressing by fifty percent, right? Um so anyway, that's still our target. Don't feel discouraged by the fact that it's currently at one oh five. We still have a few years in the planning window um to address that. You know, we still have to have conversations about thoroughfares. You know, we still have to have conversations about just other other priorities that might come up over the course of the next few years. So again, there's still opportunities to to reach that goal. But we need to do a better job of telling that story, right? And so we'll we'll definitely do that.
So here here's a a couple of slides here that I that I mentioned before that just kind of sum up all of the uh street projects. This slide is specific to residential streets that are in your in the then the uh excuse me, in the CIP. Um so um basically taking them, sum them all up in one, we've got uh fifty-one million dollars worth of residential street projects. Uh I don't want to go through every single one of these, but these are all all in the uh the handout that you have now. And then, oh, excuse me. And then here would be the uh sort of uh thoroughfare-type projects uh over the five-year CIP, we're sitting at about twenty-nine million. Uh a lot of these projects um are are milling overlays. Uh like Mayor mentioned, from from number nine all the way down to number twenty-six, that's um a a lot of maintenance projects going on over a five-year period.
Can you go back?
Yes, sir. Residential?
Yeah, how many projects are actual reconstruction under residential and then under thoroughfares? A lot of them are real milling overlays, and they're necessary. I I just would like to know how many are actual reconstruction. And how does that vary from the past?
In the past, the only options were reconstruct and seal code. And so now it would be reconstruct, seal code, and milling overlay.
So are you saying that more streets were reconstructed in the previous five years than are gonna be reconstr- that's what I want to know. Basically, I understand.
We can we can we can get the breakdown to confirm reconstruction, but I would I would advise that, you know, different types of streets need different type of work. Uh we do have a very specific reconstruction goal. It wasn't on the slide that Todd put up, but um there was a very specific reconstruction goal of reconstructing twenty-five percent of the worst streets in our city over the over the next five-year planning window, which is any street below a score of forty PCI. So that was also a very specific goal of ours going into the development of this five-year period. Um and I do, we're actually gonna exceed that twenty-five percent extremely easily, so we've actually thought about coming up with a new goal, um because I think we're already at thirty.
We're at thirty percent right now.
Yeah, so um, you know, we can we can have conversations about, okay, we started with a goal of twenty-five percent for reconstruct of our worst streets, we're already at thirty, but we still have, you know, seven miles to go um to reach the hundred and twelve goal. So out of that remaining seven miles, you know, there's still some room for whatever, right? Um maybe the goal ought to be thirty-five percent or whatever, but um but to your point, we'll get a better breakdown of reconstruct past versus reconstruct present.
Well, and I think that's also something you need to publicize, that we're reconstructing a lot a lot of streets and how many we're reconstructing. I mean, there is a perception out there now, it's not lately because we've got every east-west street under construction right now, but we need to do a better job of selling.
Right. My my, yeah, my personal opinion, though, I don't think the public will will care if a street is milling and overlayed or completely reconstructed, if the finish is still a smooth asphalt finish.
That's a good point.
Um if anything, you know, they might have questions around seal codes, because those are a little rougher. Um but to just the, you know, the ar- the resident, I was gonna say average person. That's a horrible way of describing, right, a person, but um so scratch that from the record. But in any case, uh the when the finish is the same, I don't think the public will will care if we reconstruct it or milling overlaid it. Because it's just gonna look like a brand-new street.
Especially if we did it quicker, they're happier.
Right, yeah, it's a good point, right, yeah.
One of the things that I I think would be beneficial is is if we took this map and we and we came in and and just changed the colors, right? So we would go back and say, okay, well, all the reconstruction projects are gonna be green and all the milling overlays will be blue, and all the seal coats can be red or whatever. I mean, this is our GIS department can can whip this out pretty quick.
Well, and you could also show how it would change over the years, and it would make a big impression if you show, all of a sudden, we did these streets, we did these streets. We did these streets.
We'll we'll look at how to graphically be able to show that a little better, yeah, for sure. Great ideas, great idea, too, Todd.
So, excuse me, so uh one of the one another portion of the uh the presentation that we wanted to uh kind of have discussion around was uh the thoroughfare master plan um and and potentially the the next uh thoroughfare uh project. Um so you may remember in December, uh Julie had presented uh a a couple of slides in in the CIP presentation about uh the the TMP. And in the TMP, it it had recommended uh two existing streets for for improvement. Uh those streets were Guy Grant and and North Street. Um so we've had some internal discussions about about these projects, um and so we wanted just kind of to uh uh discuss them with you today. Uh this is this is uh Guy Grant. Um obviously, the the yellow portion here from Salem to to Mockingbird is the existing portion of Guy Grant, and then the red would uh would reflect the uh extension if 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 it ever happened. Uh this is just a quick picture of of current uh currently what Guy Grant looks like. And then you may recall, we also have the the open dits section um along Guy Grant, along the existing portion. So the discussion today, uh just kind of wants to, kind of wanted to highlight a couple of different options that uh that we could that we could uh uh include in the CIP in terms of of Guy Grant. Um option one would essentially be uh reconstructing the roadway as it is, uh just a two-lane, two-lane hot mix section, um no other improvements. Um that that current estimated cost right now is about one point seven million.
And and if the answer was yes to that, we'd be able to put it into the CIP, obviously, much sooner. Um because it's only one point seven million dollars. Yeah, only, correct, only.
Does that mean North Street's gonna be higher? Does that mean North Street's gonna be higher?
Uh that means North Street, yes.
You had these two here, is it like we gotta pick either we're doing Guy Grant?
Yeah, so we kind of started um, I guess, big picture, right? I mean, uh and and if we think back to the um options, we want to call them that associated with thoroughfares, you know, there was North Street, there was Guy Grant, you know, you had suggested Ben Wilson. Um what was it, Ben George? Um and there was one more that had been talked about. But in any case, eventually, you know, it got down to North Street, Guy Grant, just based off of conversations with with you in one-on-ones, based off of conversations internally. Um this Guy Grant option is one that um really sticks to the top because it's been a project that has been discussed for a long time. So some of the feedback that I got from some of you in 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 some of my meetings were that, you know, this the expectation to complete Guy Grant is much more present than an expectation to address North Street. So that's why we're showing the Guy Grant option now. Um what we're hoping that we get in terms of, I guess, direction on specifically on just Guy Grant is council's feedback on on whether there's any appetite to just reconstruct the roadway how it is now. Or if council really wants to pursue, you know, the entire project. Staff had come up with cost estimates um that put the total project at above ten million dollars. We would feel more comfortable that, or I would feel more comfortable that if the direction is do the entire thing, right, box the ditch, put the sidewalks on both sides and really make it more of a complete street, I would feel more comfortable outsourcing that to an engineering firm to get us a more solidified confirmed budget number on how much it would cost. Because this project is 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 complex. It's not a, it's not a, it's not a traditional, I hate to use that word, but it's not a traditional type of complete reconstruct that, you know, we've done in the past. Because this ditch really throws everything, you know, for a loop. And so I feel more comfortable getting an engineering firm that has more of expertise on the drainage side um to be able to provide a a more adequate cost. So but it but it but but we did not want to assume um that council um wanted to go that route because some of the feedback that I also received from some council members were that the I guess what we show as option two, historically speaking, was something that maybe was more being pushed on by staff. And so this is an opportunity to confirm with you if that's what you really want.
I have some concerns with option two, and Jesus and I have discussed it. Um from the loop, when we get stormwater runoff, I believe in our stormwater uh master plan, it all runs towards this direction. Open ditch provides you with a lot more capacity for stormwater. Um I think it'd have to be a a pretty big box culvert, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but to be able to handle the amount of water that that ditch will. So for those massive rain times, the open ditch continues to make sense from the amount of watershed that it gets. Um and then I would also, you know, to make a a really solid decision, what are the traffic counts on North versus Guy Grant?
Yeah, my my theory or feeling has been that um Guy Grant gets a lot of traffic use and the road's in terrible condition, and we just kind of leave it there because the ultimate Cadillac fix is way too expensive. And if it if it were a place other than Guy Grant, we'd be addressing it and we'd be fixing it, kind of like we're doing Dairy Road. And so I just, yeah.
And you know, option two to me on this has some attraction, because one of the things that's been concern concerning to me about Guy Grant is not just the condition of the road, but the fact its proximity to the elementary school.
No sidewalks.
And you know, that's always been concerned to me. I mean, I grew up right around the corner from there, so I've seen a lot, and I know kids walk that, you know, walk that way quite a bit. Um and the open ditch, I understand that it carries more water, but I see also see it from a from a, you know, maintenance standpoint for the people, but also from a from a safety standpoint for traffic uh creating some issue there, so. I you know, I don't know if there's something in between option one and option two.
And that's part, that's part of the reason why um we would want uh to outsource, you know, to an engineering firm to kind of develop some pre-engineering options, right? They'd be able to run some more technical analysis to really give a more definitive response to, okay, if you put the box culvert, how much less water, you know, is added capacity? I mean, there could be all sorts of analysis that could be run, you know, to make more of an informed decision, you know, taking into account the concern about water capacity, taking into account, you know, the pedestrian piece. Uh you know, if 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 money was not an issue, um you know, obviously, everybody would, assuming the Mac would work for drainage purposes, you know, everybody would probably want it to cover it up and put a more legitimate complete street on it, right? But, you know, if that project ends up being, you know, twelve to fifteen million dollars, and this isn't a project that can easily be phased. So, you know, if if you do sort, you know, go at doing this project, you're talking about doing it all at once. Uh sure, the future phase that doesn't exist, yeah, that could be an outer phase. But for this piece, it'd be very difficult to just pick a spot somewhere in the middle and just do it. Not impossible, but it'd just be very difficult. Um is there an answer in between? I don't know. I've asked the same question. Um, you know, there's obviously properties on the other side of Guy Grant. Um but there are homes, you know, that are at least one or two that are really, really close to the road. So even if there want, even if there was an appetite to acquire additional right-of-way to keep the ditch on that side and then have room to at least build a road and a sidewalk, yeah, that'd be very difficult to achieve as well. Not impossible, but it would be difficult because of the proximity of some of the home. So there's.
Are you done now?
Yeah, sorry.
I drive Guy Grant all the time, and the ditch does fill up with water to a to and it doesn't go all the way down, so I'd like to know where the water actually goes because it it fills up that ditch because that ditch is really deep. But if you go down further, there's never a drainage problem further down Guy Grant, so that water goes somewhere if it goes into the ground.
Through Shenandoah.
Right.
But where does it go to Shenandoah? Because when you go down, there's it's it's a real deep ditch for a while and then it's pretty, it's shallow.
It's kind of near the intersection of Savannah.
Yeah. So where does it go from there?
To the, through the Greenbelt Park.
So is there drainage underneath uh Guy Grant that goes that way?
There is drainage underneath Guy Grant. That's correct.
It it comes out, you know, Mark, where that kind of.
Low water crossing.
Is that where?
That's where it comes comes through.
Would it qualify for a complete street grant? If you put a, why do you have to put sidewalks on both sides? You could just put it on the side where the drainage ditch is. Over the drainage ditch and put a giant sidewalk that eventually could be a connect with a trail if you ever. If it was ever extended down, for example, because then it could connect with the trail down on Ben Jordan.
Well, if you cover the ditch, I mean, that opens up the right of way to be able to legitimately put, you know, sidewalks on both sides, which you don't have to, I get that. But it would, my point is there'd be enough right of way to be able to do sidewalks on both sides. There'd be enough right of way to put middle turn lanes, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
There are grants for complete streets. Would it qualify for such a thing?
I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I think we need to find out because if we get a grant for it, it would change. You know, how much it would cost to do the street the right way. I can't just see, it needs sidewalks. Those kids walk along the fence and one of them, one day they're gonna fall in the ditch and then we're gonna go, well, why didn't the city fix this? Or they walk out in the street and there's no place to walk out in the street. I mean. It's it's a safety hazard.
It's been a huge concern of mine.
It's a huge concern of mine since I've, and I live in Council Hills West and when Chandler was built, it's a huge concern.
Julie's doing doing work, listening to our conversation. Julie, do you want to come up and provide your opinion and comments?
In the meantime, can I give my comments? I don't think option one would be anything we should consider if we're really thinking about redoing the whole street at any point. Because it's like wasting money because you're only gonna put a tape on a big, big, you know, open. I, you know, if there was something in between one and two or even two and, you know, let's go for fixing the whole thing, not just. Put a Band-Aid on it. That's my opinion.
I was also gonna ask, is there another slide after this? It says North options because we've, we we said North and Guy Grant, but I feel like we're only talking about Guy Grant. And we're not addressing North or why or why not. And I'd like to hear the reasons and and maybe see some cost estimates and what scope would would involve and. And if it gets down to that point, what are traffic counts, what are road scores, what's, what are the pros and cons between the two?
Well, I know that Julie was gonna hit on on the traffic count because she pulled that up, but but to to answer your question, we don't have. North Street options costed out either. Um, because we also need to have a conversation about what you want that to look like. Um, you know, because if you look at the stretch of North Street, you know, there are sections that have sidewalks, some that don't, right? And so, I, it's so easy to convey, yeah, let's just look at doing a complete street. And it rolls off the tongue easily, right? But the fact, but the real life impact of trying to do that. Is that in some instances, there just might not be enough room to do that. Um and so. And North Street is a la, is a lo, very long stretch. It's it's been priced out before. So for you, Ken, do you remember how how, what those costs, previous cost estimates have been?
It was the, North Street was twenty-five to thirty million. And it was putting it back exactly like it was and that's what you alluded to is what do we want it to look like? And Julie has some ideas.
Not on that. Kind of. Um so traffic counts, um they're about equal actually, so um Guy Grant right at Salem. Um right in front of the big ditch has the highest, the the point, that point, that traffic count's highest on Gray Grant is right there and that's um. A little over five thousand cars and these are from Tech Dots twenty twenty ADTs. And then the highest point of traffic counts on North Street is right, um. No, yeah, in front of Patty Welder. And then it drops off down to Strowman. So, um you know, and it, Mockingbird, Guy Grant's closer to three thousand and and. Closer to um seven hundred main on the other side of Barrow, that's three thousand. So they're very equal. Um Guy Grant, of course, in front of H B has very high traffic counts, but of course that section of road is very nice. Um and then. To the, your point about the grants, we did apply for the build grant probably about three years, three or four years ago. Um I think we applied, it was about thirteen million that we applied for. Um and we were declined, or we, you know, we did not receive that grant and the feedback that we received is that it was more of a drainage project. Than a transportation project. But of course, that's just one grant, one round.
Yeah, but now there's a different kind of grant, the complete street grants. And I'm sure their criteria would be a little bit different because they want you to have, make sure you have like a trail or bike lane included. And that's why I say if you cover up the ditch on that side, you could do that and eventually we could maybe connect the tr, it to the trail system.
And that was part of that estimate that we did three to four years ago. We did the whole thing, the hiking bike trail, street. Right, we did it all. One thing on on, real quick on North Street, to mention why it's a, it's difficult street. Is the same thing we ran into on Crestwood, parking. People do park, there are sections of North Street that's got houses on both sides. And if you notice, there's cars parked. So when you start looking at at a street, you start getting bigger to allow for parking. But that's something that we need to kind of go over.
Also, are there utility concerns with, like Dairy Road, we found out there's water main that we got concerned with. Is there? Other than drainage on Guy Grant or and on North Street, are there utility concerns? Are there utilities that need to be fixed?
We've got the utilities estimated on North Street, on Guy Grant. There is a thirty inch sewer line, that can be lined. Without disruption to the roadway. So that's part of it and then it's just simple replacement of a, uh. I think it's an eight inch water line that we could go to a twelve inch. So, nothing major as far as a sixteen inch water main or a. Or twenty-four inch, you know, sewer line. It's a thirty inch, but we can line it. That's what our whole plan was. Much cheaper.
Was that on Guy Grant or North?
That's Guy Grant.
That's on Guy Grant. North Street, we've done some, if you remember, with the downtown utility projects. We've done the utilities up to, and I want to say Navarro Street. And so we've got those utilities already done in place, taken care of. Rest of it, we've got figured in the estimate.
On previous CIPs, North Street was in phases. Could that still be done?
Absolutely.
And would you have to start at one end and go to the other or would you do a certain section? Could you do a middle section before another section or?
I I kind of like Jesus's idea, let's start at one end and progress. Uh and and a lot of.
It doesn't have to be that way.
But it's a good way to.
Yeah, they talk about the, because then.
But if there's no utilities that need to be replaced.
And and one of the things on North Street, if you'll drive it from like uh Moody's Street towards uh. I think it's right at Laurent. That's concrete pavement. It's much like Red River was in that section between Navarro and Main where we just milled it, sealed it and overlaid it. That's what our plan was on North Street. Mill it, mill the old pavement off, the old asphalt, fix some of the point repairs that we may need. And then overlay it. It's a brand new road. So that one was the cheaper part of North Street.
So, we we didn't anticipate, uh because again, normally we don't finalize this this plan until May anyway. We didn't necessarily anticipate, you know, any um, you know, major final decisions coming from the store for a conversation today, but. Um I think we've gotten some very, some clear consensus specifically around Guy Grant.
Well, I'm I'm concerned about Guy Grant because basically option three is what we seem to be siding toward, which is do nothing.
Well, tha- that wasn't what I was gonna say. What I was gonna say is that what I'm hearing is that, is that, is that council would be um supportive. Of continuing to explore formally um s, an engineering. Start the engineering design for Guy Grant for more of a complete reconstruct to then have a more informed.
Is there a way to do a hybrid?
I, we don't know, we, I mean, I mean, I've had the same questions, um and it's.
Yeah, can a sidewalk fit against the fence?
You know, I mean, could there be a hybrid where maybe you have a concrete lined ditch that isn't enclosed so that it doesn't impact capacity? Maybe, right? So I mean, because the box culvert system is obviously gonna gonna do that. The concern with um. Yeah, I mean, you can engineer anything, right? Uh, but, but it's just understanding what those options are. Because I'm sure we've all seen, you know, concrete lined, you know, ditches that aren't enclosed. And they're not enclosed for a reason because everybody recognizes that open ditch regardless of whether it's concrete or not, just carries more water. But anyway, that's what I'm hearing. I'm not hearing that you don't want to um. Do anything on Guy Grant. What I'm hearing is that you rather wait, continue to wait to fix it right.
Yes.
How do uh, this is kind of off the wall, but galleon walls compared to concrete? We have some galleons there off of airline. Um, how do they, and cost wise?
Though those are going up in costs. They're more expensive. The advantage is you can do kind of a stair step and it's more capacity. And it's the ecological thing way to do. I'll be honest, it they, there's pros and cons. And there's other things that are out there that have gone past just concrete and even gabions. There's a lot different, you know, methods, reinforced earth. So, we would look at all of them. One thing we could do is do a preliminary engineering. Where we don't finalize the whole thing, but let's look at preliminary. It's, you know, get some rough costs on it and some ideas, some conceptual plan, planning on it. Uh, and go that route first before you do a full blown engineering contract.
And Ken, are you talking just about the uh the ditch line? Uh go with that first and find out what that cost is before we add the cost to the street?
I would say on preliminary engineering, let them look, let let it, look at it all and look at other options. Is there? The concern I got is there's right of way issues and if you want, if you if you just throw a pipe in and throw a sidewalk on it. Then five years down the road, you say, we want to, we need to redo this street. You gotta rip that two million dollars of stuff out. Because it doesn't fit. So, that's part of the the good thing of a preliminary engineering. They can see, is there ways to. Get a sidewalk in or it's still gonna be a nice street and. Not design it all the way, just kind of get the that start off to see where we're at on it. Just kind of like the SCADA system, what we're gonna do with the uh wastewater plant.
Okay, so we don't have a slide with options for North Street, um but it's, it was listed on there for a reason. Um because again, based of my conversations with all of you, those were the two that stood out. Um and so, what would you like to see related to North Street? Would you like to see um an update to. The original phasing approach?
I think that would be good.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see a cost for that mill and overlay to Laurent. I mean, that.
So the one thing to keep in mind is is you 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 gotta have, the scope's gotta drive the cost. If we come with a bunch of different options. We we sort of need to know exactly. So that that cost estimate for mil, for North Street was was putting it back the way it was. So, i- if you want it to be a complete street or we gotta look at sidewalks or or whatever it may be or 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 reducing the 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 uh cross section, whatever it is. That scope has to be clearly defined first before you can just estimate anything. So that's something to keep in mind.
And we could look at a couple of different options. I don't know what the right of way situation looks like, um but we'll put some, we'll put some. Some thought into it. Um I mean, at this point, realistically, you know, we aren't, we wouldn't have capacity to start tackling some of these thoroughfares. Until the outer years of this planning window.
Right.
Um, but that's okay. We can start designing and doing other thing. So, okay. I think we can wrap up.
Yep, just one more quick slide. All I had was just, uh, we would, you know, the next steps, we would incorporate any feedback, obviously like we just spoke about. Um and and then like Jesus mentioned, May of twenty, or here in the next couple of months, we would uh have the fiscal year twenty twenty-three version. Of of that CIP book um to to be able to take with you and 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 reference at any time. So, uh that is it.
I got one, one question, something that I noticed uh during the cleanup. The bridge on Callis by MLK Park. It's one of the concrete buttresses, maybe, I don't know the right term, um is failing.
Okay, thank you. Um, one last note, um Todd. Uh, this is his last presentation that he will give you. Uh, he's moving on. Uh, it's a bigger and better thing, so they recruited him away. We couldn't afford to keep him. Just, it's just, it's just life. Um, but even though he he he, even though he's been here, you know, not forever. Um, he's done a great job in helping us formalize our CIP program, puts a lot of effort and as you saw today, you know, has great ideas on how to. Show the information. So very grateful for his time with us and we of course wish him well in his future endeavors. Uh so thank you, Todd.
Yeah, thank you, Todd.
Uh, we can take a break or just go straight to Gilbert?
Take a break, uh, ten minutes max, or make it nine. So two. All right, we're back in session. Sorry, we ran two minutes long on that. We have two more items to cover. We're due this debt capacity, property tax rate update. I'm gonna cut the discussion off at. Three forty-five and um that will give us time to take care of the infill housing pilot program. Um, he's gonna fly through the presentation for us. And then we'll have a couple of minutes to wrap it up and any comments from anybody?
All right, a lot of this stuff you already seen, but you know, for the public, I'm just gonna go over from a high level. And there's a couple of slides I want to spend a little more time. Okay? Oh, wrong one. Okay, actually, let's get something on the table. And this summarized my whole presentation. We can stop after this, really. First of all, this is another Dave Ramsey show. I'll make that clear. Debt is good, but you gotta manage it. Bottom line, our objective, at least mine, to convey to you. Which what you see down here. That current action right there, current financial position, we're in a great position right now. Our debt is dropping like a hot potato. I've been mentioning that for a long time. The next seventeen, sixteen years, we're done. If we do some redemption, you're done faster. And get this, in the next eight years, your debt service will be around three million dollars. That's chicken feet compared to the ten million dollars we're dealing.
And when you say debt service, that includes principal and interest?
That's correct. Annual payment. Okay? With that said, we also want, you know, we want to keep in mind, that's great, our. Debt's dropping. But we also want to make sure our future is stable. We don't want to get into a situation like. We all were leveraged with debt. Does that make sense? There's no, no difference to do personal side of it. Now keep in mind, all these assumption plays out when you have, and all my numbers, I've been saying this to y'all. Plays out when you gotta continue tax appraisal value growth. Okay, keep that in mind. Because that plays in a lot. You have a hurricane, you got something else, you gonna have a dip. What we done before? We adapt, adjust, hold back and start again. Does that make sense? So this is not gonna happen every year, hopefully. Uh, look at the world today. So think about that. Second of all, one of my, I won't say preach, but I say this a lot. You want to maximize your cash. Issue debt when you need. If you don't need it, pay off debt. I look at it from a financial overview from a dollar perspective. I understand people like to see the tax rate. But I look more than just the tax rate. I can maintain a tax rate and be in a better position over the years. If I use that cash flow correctly. Does that make sense? If I use that tax rate to answer debt, that's a different situation. What I'm talking about, you balance your way through this process. It's not gonna be overnight, but as you go. Look at the project. It's not gonna be overnight, but as you go, look at the project, look at your environment you're in. Think about it, interest rates, everything else. Okay? So, that's in a nutshell, that's my whole presentation. Seriously.
Thank you. All right, Mike, you're up. Good job, Neil.
However, I got another ten minutes to scroll through. But anyway, you're gonna hear this repetitive. Again, it's a high level. I want to talk about the debt, historical data. I want to spend some time on SB two. I have some scenarios there that are gonna show you how that three and a half percent versus the one penny move of debt, how that work out for us, okay? And of course, real quick recap on our CS and revenue bonds debt capacity. I spilled this, I'm sorry. He's ignoring me. What is that? Okay, there ain't no difference, like Mr. Lawton eloquently, and I just saw the show last time, the conversation. I, you know, it's different when you're like an audience and you're watching in. Kinda enjoy that, but anyway, maybe in the future. We need debt. We have a lot of needs. We don't have, we don't have a lot of cash in our budget. You know that. All right, one way we do that, we use the bonds to plug those gaps when they're needed. But we gotta make sure the bonds are used correctly and effectively. Then it's a good financial tool. And I'll be straight up, we've started doing debt, it's kind of crazy. We make sure everything ties, the needs, the environment and everything else. Okay? Because you got taxpayers out there down the road, they gotta deal with this debt. What is debt capacity? Basically for government side, debt capacity and capability is almost the same thing. Debt capacity surrounds itself around the economic base, the tax appraised value, your cash flow to generate it. Well, who's paying the back? Affordability, your taxpayers. Again, balancing act. Right hand side, you get the debt capacity, influence factors. Tax appraised values influencing, debt service balance, I've mentioned, we're going down. As a result, capacity is going up. Tax rate, depends how you look at it. You remain constant, you create cash flow, you pay off more debt, you in better financial position. Or do you drop the tax rate because your debt service dropped? You have not moved yourself in a better position because you still got that debt out there and you lose that debt capacity for the coming year. And if you need to sell bond, guess what? You gotta increase your debt tax rate. Does that make sense? All those things, I'll put utilities up if I straightforward. I mean, we are. Debt management. In this cycle of the CIP, everything's the same. You still evaluate your CIP. You maximize your cash. I'm, I'm repeating myself, I know that. CIP would drive the projects. Final question, do you need debt? It's up to council. No debt needed. Question number two, do we lower the tax rate? Or do we maintain some of a stable tax rate and redeem some bonds, maintain that capacity, move it forward? Reduce your interest and principal and reduce your outstanding debt shorter. But it's a decision. Just because you go with the A or B, either one, they're correct. Point is, which one's more advantageous for you all? I, in a given time, would go, oh, well, of course, we'll go with the other one. I like to redeem debt. If it's not needed, why not? Now, I understand there's taxpayers that think about it, but you still can redeem debt like we did before. We didn't use all of it. We dropped it still. We dropped the debt tax rate, but we still redeemed it. Because we had appraised values, right? So, those things need taking back. Any questions? Historical data, I'm not gonna go through all this again, but basically, here's what I was telling you about. Eight point seven increase in tax appraised value gave us the leverage to do a lot of things. We added five hundred thousand dollars in bond, we redeemed some bonds. As a result, it ticked, our debt service went up, but our tax rate went down because of appraised values. That little portion there is the bond redemption. If that wasn't done, you would see your debt service drop. I know going a little fast. There's another slide I want to get to. Any questions?
What taxable appraised value, why was the big drop in twenty nineteen?
Twenty nineteen, here, uh, one hurricane hardly hit.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, there was another thing. Did we have recession in eighteen, follow the following year? Got that. Wow, you caught me off guard on that one.
Yes. I owe money now.
Hey, I'm allowed to have once, two times, or maybe three. I know the answer. I have it in my file. I'd get it to you because you know I will.
There may have been some protests in eighteen based on seventeen also.
Okay, but I know something.
All right.
And we go on, okay? Go. All right. Left hand side. I think Mr. uh, Mr. Lawton addressed this. Our, our percentage, if you do, if you look at from the percentage side, yeah, we haven't dropped anything on the percentage side. If you do the, if you didn't redeem the bond, your percentage would drop. Logical math, that's all it is too. However, when you look at the overall tax rate, we went from six to one to sixty-eight point eight. We still had over a penny drop. If we didn't do it, you're looking at from six to one to fifty-seven. It looks better from a tax position. But when you look at your financial statement and debt outstanding, you paid off a half million dollars. You saved two hundred thousand dollars. It's coming faster. So, either one is, there's nothing wrong with it, but this one has a benefit. You had the leverage of a higher tax rate, I mean, uh, appraised value. Why not use it whenever it has, when it's presented to you, use it, take advantage of it. Now, if you went down the other way, it's a different story. Yes, sir. Another way to look at this is no bond redemption, we're not gonna pay off bonds and, uh, we don't worry about the CIP right now, your tax rate dropped. Whenever you want something, you would have to increase your tax rate to accommodate that debt capacity. On this slide, it's kind of rough, but I try to show that this highlighted stuff, or I guess it's white or cream color. That's your cash flow debt capacity, where you use it to pay debt or use it to pay for new infrastructure. And what you technically have, with the assumptions, you have a steady growth in your TAV, tax appraised value. Your tax rate will still decline, but more of a steady decline, not drastically. Make sense? Again, it's a huge assumption that TAV continues to grow. Yes, sir.
I have a question on these, uh, amounts. They're based on what sort of growth?
One and a half.
It's a, one point five?
No, that's a good conservative growth.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah, but keep in mind, in your, in your early years here, we got Calipiler first, phase first, phase one, excuse me, coming in in twenty-three. There's another phase coming in twenty-four. That's a big boost. I have account, had a camp with that in your numbers and everything else. On top of that, there's a couple of other tax abatement going away, Ashley, things like that. But my overall, like Jesus mentioned, it's one point five.
Ashley's furniture, not Ashley Streeb's tax abatement.
I have to give him something there. But overall, the past twelve years, we had three point one average increase. If you look at it that way, if your average, rolling average, three point one. You have to do a roller coaster, but it's three point one. Okay?
Three point one what?
Growth.
Okay. At one time, I talked with Mr. Halliburton and I, you gave me a bunch of tax figures and I put them into a spreadsheet. And over a six year period, if you averaged it, it was like one point nine nine percent each year. I mean, some years it goes down, some years, this one they're talking about, it went down because some of the tax things were taken out of the equation on that one year. Um, commercial and.
Here's your growth.
Right. And if you, I looked over six years, it went, if you took from six years ago until this last year and you divided it by six years, it was one point nine nine. But it goes up and down and up and down and it depends on, for example, it's been brought up about commercial, we weren't getting our fair share of commercial taxes. Well, they got a lot of, they, they got a lot of exemptions. Industrial tax got a lot of exemptions. So, but the one point five is great to, because that's a nice conservative number.
Oh, yeah, not only that, once you start going past three years, you know, it's no need to go radical.
Yeah, who knows?
It's just like, you're never gonna know.
In, in all of you.
And as we learned, you know, this past year, even though we take a one point five percent conservative approach, if there is a year where it comes in, you know, eight percent, seven percent, six percent, it creates unique opportunities, you know, that specific year.
Right.
That then impact the way everything else looks like after that.
Right.
In, in all of your charts, you're just taking the point of where we are now and projecting that out. You're not adding any, any additional debt that's been created over time.
This is a snapshot right now.
If we were to clear ourselves out as of where we are right now.
It does include CIP though.
No, this is fully capacity. I have not deducted capacity yet.
Yeah.
My last slide, I show that. But this is like, this is your snapshot. This is how much money you have today without spending nothing. Okay? Now, it's for giggles. For, uh, I don't mind going, put myself on the line.
Let me ask a clarifying question. Okay, these debt capacity numbers are, would keep the tax, would keep the same amount monetarily of debt?
Debt capacity?
Yes. Like if it's ten million, would it be ten minute, if I did the debt capacity in twenty twenty-three, would it be ten million again?
In theory, yes, but not in factual, because every year, I might, I don't know if you go back to last year's CIP. I had a different debt capacity for twenty twenty-three.
Right.
Right, now we had ten million dollar debt capacity.
Because you paid off bonds.
Not completely. That's a portion like that.
Right.
I had an eight point seven increase in tax appraised values. You have created value to deal with debt now. Understand?
No, I understand.
At the same time, I paid off debt and I redeemed it, take that plus increase in valuation. Give you a great opportunity to do whatever you want.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Right.
If I didn't have the eight point seven, I had zero. Uh, you want to show that, I want to show that ten million. So, every year, I went back to, I don't know, ten years ago. I had my CIP debt capacity presentation. I'm not that far off, maybe two, three million dollars each year. Because that roller coaster night, TAV, but I kept at one point five even throughout the years. For twenty twenty-three, I got the one point five overall as a growth in TAV. On top of that, I have Calipiler and some other coming off, so I got a total of about two point nine or three percent growth in my numbers working into twenty twenty-three. I kind of, we'll find out around May if I'm close to that. Hopefully, I'm above that. Keep in mind, I'm not considering yet new construction, so I might be a bit shaky.
All right, just so you know, Gilbert, we have thirty minutes left.
Oh. But I see such happy faces. They want this, this Gil show.
Very, very happy faces.
All right, now, real quick, SB two, real quick overview, and there's a change, a change in terminology. I picked the tax rate, now it's called non-new, uh, revenue tax rate, rollback tax rate. It's now called approval tax, voter's approval tax rate. I still call it the old names, maybe after twenty-seven years. Anyway, tax calculation, in prior years, the rollback would basically, we were allowed to increase the M and O effective tax rate by eight percent. Plus, you take your debt straightforward and that's your max. Now, they only gave you three and a half, thank you very much, on your M and O. Plus, they give you your debt, plus they remind us to let you carry it over the unused portion for the following year. Okay, pretty straightforward. Election, prior law, because your proposal is greater than your rollback. Petition required first. Now, if it's greater, proposed actually, automatic election, I think on November, in November. Unused increment three point five tax. I want to make sure everybody understands, this is basically on top of your, I'm gonna call it, uh, your, your, your non-new revenue tax rate or effective tax rate, M and O. Does that make sense? They'll say, city, your M and O effective tax rate or the other name, to generate the same level of revenue from last year as this, for your M and O side. On top of that, I'll give you three and a half percent. That's what we're talking about. It has nothing to do with your debt and nothing like that. And on top of that, you allow to use the unused, because we have not used all of it up, to carry it over three years. But the bad news is, at the end of the third year, we haven't used what's gonna be accumulated, carried over, you lose it, you forfeit it, you start back to zero.
Oh, yeah, it's not a rolling three year.
It's up to three year. If you want to play words, yeah, rolling up to three and drops.
What I'm saying, that first year, okay, you carried over, second year, you carried over, third year, you carried over. You don't drop off year one and go to year two, three, four, back to zero.
For example, here's our status right now. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Welcome to my world. Here's the first year in twenty twenty-one. SB was, came about, well, the border approval tax rate there was sixty oh eight. The border approval tax rate with the unused carrier was the same number because that's the first year the law came in effect. But we submit, we propose a tax rate of six to one fifteen, we had a carryover of point zero zero nine three, okay? That's the first year. In twenty twenty-two, here's your border approval. Here, this number includes that plus the carryover. Now you have this number to contend with, but we set a tax rate of fifty-eight fifty-two. But now we still have a carryover of point zero zero nine two. The kicker here is now, what are we gonna do in year three? What's left over here is gone, so I have a balance. With year four, which is the first year of the following, starts back to zero. Okay, so, for example, if your tax appraised value is coming in high again, of course, it's gonna create some pressure on this because you're tendency to lower the tax rate, you won't be able to use all this up. Okay, because you can probably use a three and a half for sure. The question is, how far aggressive we want to get with that? Pretty much, we might have something on the table. That's what happens is three, going from eight to three and a half. And law is, after three years, it goes down to zero.
And then starts over or?
It starts over.
That's not a phase in kind of thing?
It starts back door within that fiscal year, whatever those rates are, and you carry over starts. That's the only thing, bad thing about this. Any questions? Make sure you understand that. We'll have more discussion about this. All right, there's a couple of examples here that I came up with to talk about, okay? And to put it up there, the question of the day. Yeah. Move pennies from the debt tax rate to the M and O side, or you pay off debt and, or issue debt from the CIP that, you know, project that need it. Well, it depends on council, however they want to approach it. Whatever action you do here, it's gonna set the policy and tone how your tax rate is gonna be established. Does that make sense? Pretty straightforward. If you want to do this type of action every time, you kind of have set somewhat your tone for your tax rate, how it needs to go. From the debt side. The other way, you lower the tax rate, you reduce the debt capacity, and you can, you're down whenever you want to issue debt, you increase it later in the future. Nothing wrong with that, but it's a decision how you want to handle it. Uh, also, you know, you have a higher bank for your book on a lower percentage, it grows. But if you're looking from my perspective, that I want to continue, continue that financial stability, it's a slower case. There's nothing wrong with it, but just slower. Or your other option, which I mentioned before, you maintain stable tax rate, debt tax rate depending on your appraised value, assuming there's some growth there. Maintain your debt capacity if you can, pay off debt, carry that debt capacity forward. Pay off, uh, take advantage of the SB two. What I mean by that, and I'll show you this. Sure, your percentage debt tax rate percentage would be slower. But the uptake of that, you get faster financial stability to move you so forward in a better position to issue debt later. Let's take example number one. This is last year's tax rate. Let's assume that we don't. Let's assume that we don't, we would set a tax rate at our max, that's allowed by law, before going to, to the tax bill for election. In this situation, our tax rate had been fifty eight fifty-two, we had a drop of two point six three. From last year's tax rate. The debt would have dropped off by two cents. Keep that in mind. M and O only went down by point zero sixty, why? Well, here's our effective tax rate M and O. We added three and a half percent, required, allowed by law. We added in the point zero zero nine three from the carryover, I have now able to use thirty five ninety-eight. Which is an increase of two cents. So, technically, I increased my M and O side by over two pennies. Does that make sense to y'all? Which would generate more revenue. Above the effective tax rate. That makes sense to y'all, it's important. So what I'm saying here, yeah, we can move two cents, but you're already increasing it by over two cents already, without even messing with your debt tax rate. To the max. Why not use the rest to pay off bonds? That's my point here. Let's go to the, this is without redeeming bonds, this is redeeming bonds here, same situation. I don't wanna max this out now, cause I wanna use it to redeem bonds, my M and O stays the same, and I'm gonna max that out with my three and a half plus any carryover. I still got two point one cents being added over my effective M and O tax rate. All, uh, still, it's below that, for my benefit, I'm use, I'm better off using these, the S B two, instead of moving a penny. Over to the M and O, with all due respect, there's nothing wrong with that, but you missing out on this opportunity there. If you don't wanna pay off debt early, fine, don't do it, but this is much a bigger bang for your buck, that's what I'm trying to tell you. Now, any questions, those two? How much more time do I have, sir?
Uh, thank you, sir, for checking in, sir, you have about twenty minutes.
I'm doing fantastic. This is what we did in twenty twenty-two, this is our tax rate. We said thirty-five with six, we only went down one point five, why? We decided not to, to give the taxpayer more of a break. We did not increase the max, we carry over point zero zero nine two, it's hard to read. But we carry that over, so I didn't max out my M and O side, okay? So that's why that carryover is there, cause why don't we, why don't we use thirty-five with six from the maximum amount thirty-five ninety-eight? Which results in that one point five cents, my debt will be the same, because I'm gonna redeem bonds. So what I'm saying here is that y'all went in the middle of the road, which is great. You gave the taxpayer more relief, you can take the fuel advantage of the M and O side, but at the same time, you did do some redeem on the bonds. As well, you reduced the M and O and the debt. Does that make sense? The reason you did that, guys, to chase the tax appraisal values, give you that opportunity to do that. Questions? I don't have answers. Okay. Giles, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time here, frankly, you knew that, it's dropping like a potato. Uh, here's your debt capacity snapshot, let me go back to this, this slide tells you more. Here's your debt capacity light out, okay, here's your proposed C I P right now. Right now, Todd, who's leaving, gave up this opportunity. Left you with this. We're, and 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 twenty-three, we had the opportunity, I gotta give you a hard time, baby. In twenty-three, we're looking at one point one million dollar C O for streets. New, new bonds. In twenty-three, here are the street C O, new bond issued. It's all, and that's for your C I P currently right now. And, in twenty-five, it's five million dollars for one street, I can't think of the name of that street, but it's. Forget it, but this one street, this is what you have in our C I P plan, if council decide, yeah, yeah, that's what I want, okay? Here is your debt capacity situation, okay? I have ten million dollars, if it plays out, right? I only need one point one. What do I do? Well, I like to move it. Why not do both, move it and maybe drop a little bit of the debt tax rate? And still take advantage of, uh, paying off debt, or if you get radical, we can do, take, pay it all off. There you go, faster debt, so it's a situation, a conversation needs to take place among council. But here, there is no problem. Redeem debt and also drop in the debt tax rate, just that, with that balance in line, how council wants to feel about, act on that. Here, I got forty million dollars. I have twenty-three needed as of today, next year might be a different story, but same logic. It flows that way, and that's what I'm trying to encourage y'all to start thinking, well. Just keep some of this cash flow, pay off debt early, also draw up the tax rate when we can, everybody's happy. Makes sense?
Gilbert, I'm gonna add a tidbit here, so.
I'm sorry, you're not on my schedule.
It's okay, I'll give you an extra thirty seconds. So, this is important, especially as we have conversations about public safety headquarters building, right? Because this is a project that's twenty-five to thirty million dollars, right? Which arguably would come in at, in twenty-four at some point, right? Well, we know that we have the forty in available debt capacity, but we're already counting for twenty-three, so it only leaves, you know, seventeen. If we only use up one point one out of the ten, then you can move over, right, nine. So then you add the nine to the seventeen. And then you create new debt capacity available in twenty-four of twenty-seven. Right? The options that Gilbert and I are working on for public safety headquarters building, won't fund the entire public safety out of C O's. But it gives you a picture of why it's important that the decisions that we make now impact. The future and how they interplay with C I P. Because whatever we decide to do with that ten point five, because we only need one point one, will have an impact on how much debt capacity is available in twenty-four. And so on and so forth, right, so it's all interconnected.
And you have to be transparent, you can decide to drop the whole thing, but again, like I've been saying, then you.
Or you can decide to use it. I mean, you, I mean, you know, we, we talk about, um, you know, Guy Grant was a perfect example, right? Where, you know, if council said, okay, I will spend the one point seven, we could have said, okay, we'll add the one point seven to the one point one. Because there's ten million dollars available. So. What would help us is to try and get a sense of, um. You know, you wanna continue our strategy to try and redeem debt sooner, you know, middle of the road, you know, how aggressive you wanna be? These are all, these are all directional points that we would need from council, you know, at some point.
Or another way, also is that, when it comes time, we can present the three different scenarios, and this is one, second, third. But it'd be nice ahead of time on how you built your budget around that scenario too as well. Okay? Any questions? Good point.
You earned yourself an extra minute.
Thank you, Bill. And uh, let me tell you, let me tell you one, I think Todd was telling me, you walk around so much, yeah. As soon as I was saying, it's only one point seven, two million dollars, like. You know, that hurts me. Alright, revenue bonds, same thing, we're dropping like a hot potato, okay? Here's our debt cap, oh, the debt capacity, every year, we're generating nine million dollars. Here's our debt dropping, here's my cash flow that we've been using, and some of that has been reduced, because we're selling some revenue bonds now. And future, okay, but this is what I'm talking about, mayor, this is how we're gonna deal with these other projects, but we need to decide. What's the needed amount, how's that can be phased in? Do we can do this with cash, if not, then what needs to be in revenue side, bonds, okay? Uh, you're asking me, well, Gil, what can, you know, how, when is this gonna stop? Good question, thank you. I don't know if, uh, uh, we're bringing up today, but we had a lot of discussion a lot in the past about this stormwater drainage, so we're still looking into the whole process. And it it would hook us to do that study, to get a strategy on that side, from a structural wise, from the rate and everything. Cause in my views, some of this cash flow can be easily moved over to that new operation. That makes sense?
Timeout, recap, so drainage master plan, right, recommended that we explore the visibility of incorporating. A stormwater sewer system, or fund, I should say. Uh, which is very common, and that's what generates money that cities use to pay for drainage. We currently do not have a dedicated revenue source for drainage, um, and most cities do. So Gilbert's point is that if there is an opportunity to reduce the rate. Well, rather than reducing the rate, let's have a conversation about establishing the stormwater fund. Taking into account that opportunity, so that the impact to the residents is not an increase to the rate. We're simply thinking smarter about how to use the existing rate. Obviously, we can decide to just reduce it, but we would encourage that we have, we would encourage you to have a conversation with us about. Using this as an opportunity to once and for all have a conversation about establishing a stormwater fee and fund. That is desperately needed, as you found out through the drainage master plan, to help fund some of that.
And that's an enterprise fund?
Correct, enterprise fund.
At zero cost at the end of the day, at the beginning, because you're gonna drop the other rate. To make up for this new enterprise.
That would be the, that would be the ideal scenario, yes. So that the message to the public is your rate isn't increasing, we're simply splitting the rate up. Um, in a different format to allocate a portion of it, to be dedicated towards stormwater sewer system. And that money can be used for maintenance, it could be used for capital projects, I mean, cities that have stormwater funds that, you know, grow over time. End up even issuing revenue bond debt to it, I mean, cause it's literally an enterprise fund, so you begin to treat it. As, you know, that's where you fund your crew that addresses drainage, that's where you do this and that. Anyway, conversation for another day, but that's what he means by that.
Anyway, I didn't wanna go down that tangent, but thank you very much, I threw it out there.
No, I appreciate it, thank you. I'm taking that minute back.
Same thing here, ladies and gentlemen, here's your bond issue we have right now in twenty twenty-three, we got twelve million dollars. Bond issue in twenty-three to do utilities for these other residential areas. Right now in twenty-three, you got debt capacity close to thirty million dollars, you wanna spend it all, but we only need twelve point one. So the remaining blue item would be moved over, on the utility side, there's no brain, you don't deal with the tax rate, I just move the cash over the next year. And then we keep going, but that's where it is.
Are there bonds to redeem on the utility side?
Well. One thing on the utility side is dropping a little faster, but you got, once you redeem bonds. What am I doing, getting that? Oh, we can redeem bonds, sorry, I was thinking refinance, nevermind, uh, we could. It's like, it depends what, and one of the point of the strategies for this new C I P about a year ago, two years ago. Well, we try to use some of this cash capacity from the utility side. Maybe we can cross over to do maybe some, help fund some streets that we're not able to fund, and use our cash situation, okay? So it all depends what our C I P need, C I P needs. If I don't need it, if we don't wanna do any, anything like that, I could buy some redeemed bonds, and we're out of here, you know, from, from the debt side, yes. But in that situation, I, I, I need to figure out, I, we got a plant that needs improvements. I need to figure out what's gonna happen with their, last time I saw was around eight million dollars, last time I saw the study. And that's a high level, I know it's not, it was a wag, it's, it's a Texan number, you know, something like that.
And we still don't know, you know, even though we're only gonna do a first phase for the inflow and infiltration study, we don't know what that's gonna reveal. You know, we don't know what improvements would be needed to address those issues. So there's still some unknowns, as it relates to the outer years associated with this.
But to answer your question, councilman, yes, we could, I would like to wait to figure out the other piece of the puzzle, how it fits in with everything else. I think this is it, you know, I appreciate it, for giving the opportunity, cause usually I don't pick it, talk in front of y'all, I understand why.
You have nine more minutes, you're gonna.
We're, we're happy to, you know, answer any questions, if you have any initial thoughts, I mean, we welcome them, right? I mean, cause legitimately, you know, we wanna develop a strategy that's consistent with what you'd like to see. Uh, and so whether now or later, you know, it would help to get a sense of where, of where you, just what you think about all of it.
Let me start it off then, I'm really comfortable with where we are, middle of the road. We give some taxpayer relief to tax rate, um, we keep our options on the table as far as bonding capacity. Um, using it to pay off when we need to pay off. Um, I, it's a strategy that Gilbert put us on since I've been on council probably. Um, as soon as we were able to, and it's, it seems to have worked well, it hasn't gotten us into any troubles. Um, I haven't. Just saying, I didn't, all I can talk about is what, where we are right now, and I don't foresee it, you know. He's, by doing this, this program, the way he's been doing it, it's given us the opportunity to have this conversation about. A huge number, a huge amount for debt capacity. Whereas, you've sat up here, you've sat up here, you've known, we haven't always had, been able to have those conversations, it's just like, okay, you're gonna get. One million dollars this year to do projects, and that's it, squeeze in what you can. So I feel very fortunate that we have been following this path, and it's, it's bearing its fruits now.
Well, I think it's a great strategy to pay off the bonds, but I really. This is something that we really, you need to have a second thought about what he presented and really think about it. Because what we do affects the future and determines what they can do with the C I P. I noticed in the C I P, they already, they only have a million one for the next year. Like your little thing shows, but, um, I think it's something you just really need to think hard about, because. The first thought is to stay the course in whatever you do, but. Uh, I really think, and I do like that we're paying off bonds, that makes so much sense. But you really need to think about how this affects the future. And I just would ask that you all really put some thought into it, and then get back to it, because. I can't give him a snap judgment right now, I mean, I really can't. And I don't want it.
One last comment, there, I wanted to make sure you, you see this for a second time. You know, in twenty-four, that's gonna drop down, and just imagine, if you're doing a redemption program, everything kinda new. This is, if we continue the process right now, don't do anything, your debt paid, paid off over here, but if you did that, that thing would've been gone over here. Yes, sir, I, I'm in your chair, I'm sorry, but it's like, and once you get to this level of four million dollars, that's chump change, really. All due respect, when you compare it to a ten million dollar annual, that's. That's all I have, ladies, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you, Gilbert.
Thank you.
I'll only add one brief comment, just for context, that, you know, when Gilbert first started this conversation with all of you. You know, years ago, this was pre S B two. So, just think how much easier it would be to consider moving pennies around. If that cap was, you know, over eight percent, as opposed to three and a half. So S B two really changed, um, a lot of just this conversation by simply just lowering that. And we can't lose sight of the fact that that's playing a huge role in this, which was different than when Gilbert first started talking to you about it.
But that, that definitely impacts my thinking, S B two.
Okay, well, last, uh, topic, uh, Mike will provide you an update on the info housing program.
Thank you, here, so you said, uh, mayor and council have a very brief presentation, and Julie will help me with that. Uh, Julie and I have been working really hard on this project, and we are delighted to bring it forth today. Now, I always start with the comprehensive plan, right? And you say, why do I start with the comprehensive plan? It's because, in my view, the comp plan is our north star. It's the plan that tells us where we want to go. And, in the, uh, twenty thirty-five comp plan, it tells us that we need to. Spend more time in infill housing, in redevelopment. We have a lot of vacant lots in the city that needs to be revitalized. So, over the past three months or so, the Victoria Housing Finance Corporation. chaired by President De La Graza, uh, Vice Chair is Jan Scott, and of course, Dr. Young. They have been working with staff to develop an infill housing program. Now, the goal of this program is to promote. Now, the goal of this program is to promote growth and redevelopment in our older neighborhoods. And how do we do that? Is by acquiring vacant lots, primarily those that have outstanding code enforcement lien cases. And transfer those lots to private builders to build single family homes. So you said, Mike, how many of those vacant lots do we have?
Mike, how many of those empty lots, vacant lots do we have?
Good question. So we have about nine hundred vacant lots that are scattered throughout the city that have code enforcement lien cases, either demolition or weeds. Over nine hundred. And they, the liens range from a hundred to sixty thousand dollars. And as you walk around the, the city, you can see those vacant lots. They are having a negative impact in our neighborhoods.
And as you're walking around, just be careful with the digits.
And the other point is that the city spends about two hundred to two hundred fifty dollars per mowing. So just imagine how much money we are spending cutting the grass on those vacant lots. So, so I'm really delighted to bring this forward. Uh, working long hours with Julie, who's been working on this for a long, long time. So the vision that we have or the problem that we want to solve, there's, there's always a policy problem that you want to solve, especially when you're in local government. You want to solve problems. The problem is, how do we convert or change those vacant lots from this to a single family home? How do we do that?
Right?
We want to go from here to here. This is in the Swan's Crossing neighborhood. This house is pending right now for one hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. That's our old Swan's Crossing neighborhood that Julie and staff started about ten, eight, ten years ago. So the vision that we have, the problem we want to solve is getting those vacant lots from this to this, to a single family house. Just imagine all those vacant lots with houses on them as opposed to being vacant with rodents and so on. So you said, well, how do you do that? So working with the Housing Finance Corporation, again, thank you, Mr. Delagrazza, for leading the Housing Finance Corporation. It's the public nonprofit housing development corporation. So the first step that we have, and Julie can jump in and help, is we have, have to identify the lots. We have already identified the light, the lots. We have nine hundred plus. We know where they are. We have a map. And we know the ones that have the code enforcement liens on them. So that's the first step. The second step is the title search, title clearance. Thomas Gooch has been working with us to come up with the process. So because before, we have a lot of properties out there that have title issues. Either the owner died and did not leave a will. So that property is essentially in limbo. You have no idea who owns it. So we have to do a title search. And if we cannot find the owner, then we have to do title clearance. Right? So once we identify the owner, we will send that owner a letter offering to purchase that property. Or the owner can agree to donate the property to the Housing Finance Corporation. So we could either buy it, you know, with a willing seller, or they can donate the property to the city, I mean, to the Housing Finance Corporation. The third step.
Mike, make sure you point out that, uh, if we buy it, but if the city has liens, there's an offset of some sort.
That is correct. So if we buy it and the city has liens, then, then we can always offset that, uh, as Ms. Scott said. So now the third step is the property acquisition itself, right? So again, the properties, the vacant lots, will be acquired either through negotiations with a willing seller or through donations. A lot of time that we've encountered is that the value of the liens is more than what the property is worth. So in that case, we can encourage or ask the owner to go ahead and donate it to the city, to the Housing Finance Corporation. So once the property is acquired, the property will be placed in the land bank. The land bank essentially is just a, a list of properties that we would maintain, that the Housing Finance Corporation would maintain and until we prepare it for the RFP. So step four is to issue an RFP. That's a request for proposal for builders. So this is a public-private partnership. The Housing Finance Corporation will acquire the lots and we will issue an RFP to solicit private developers or builders in the community to build single family homes on the properties. So once the profit, the developer or the builder, um, has been selected, right, through the RFP, then we would transfer the property or the lot to the, the builder. With conditions, you know, we have design standards, it has to be affordable and so forth. And step five is that we would recruit the home buyers. So the home buyer must be low to moderate income and they must qualify for a mortgage on their own. This, the city has the CDVG funds and that will be used to provide down payment, closing cost assistance. And the buyer must stay in the house for at least five years. If they were to leave before the five years, they would have to pay back the acquisition cost, the cost for the lot. And then the final step is the construction in the cell of the single family house. So the builder will build the house to the design standards. We already have the design standards, uh, that we use in this one's crossing neighborhood. And we plan to start with that. We will use that design. And to keep the house affordable, right? To keep it affordable, the builder must sell it or sell the house to the buyer at no more than ten to fifteen percent above the construction cost. As you know, today, the median sales price of a house in Victoria increased from one seventy-eight, a hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars to two hundred and fifteen thousand today. That's the median sales price in Victoria, two hundred fifteen thousand dollars. In fact, Jonas gave a presentation that chamber the other day and he has the same numbers. So that's unaffordable for a lot of people in Victoria, two hundred fifteen thousand median sales price. So to keep these houses, these single family homes affordable, what we're telling the, the builder is that they can only sell it at ten to fifteen percent above the construction cost. So that guarantees the builder a profit.
Hey, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Can you speak to the, maybe the choosing of properties, um, to maximize, uh, benefit?
Sure, I can let Julie do that. She's been working really hard in identifying the properties. Um, so she has the database.
So I, and the more I research it, the more I look into it, there are no two properties that are really the same. And when I'm looking at this program, there are so many different layers when it comes to, um, trying to get properties that would be, you know, choosing the ones that are ideal for this program. And so what, so far what I've focused on, we're not focusing on any that are in the floodplain. Um, so we have a lien map with all of the properties that have liens and the floodplain is overlaid on that. So that automatically counts out floodplain properties. And then I focused on certain areas. So right now I'm looking at kind of Silver City area. Um, and then some other just infill lots, but there's a lot of layers to it. I, I first identified twenty-five properties and I'm down to like seven that also didn't have tax liens because our liens get forgiven with, with tax sales. Um, so we have a lot of cleanup to do on our lien database as well. Um, and so, you know, as I do deed research and as I do lien research on these properties, I'm down to seven now out of that original list of twenty-five, which of course is twenty-five out of nine hundred. And so it's, um, definitely going to be case by case, but like, for example, the two properties that I am most excited about, they actually have very small liens. Um, their value is also very small. We're talking like fifteen hundred dollar lot value with a couple hundred dollar lien value. Um, and but those are the ideal candidates to, um, approach the property owner to buy from for, you know, I don't know, for five, seven, five hundred or something. That's what the tax sale values are about going for, sixty-five hundred, seventy-five hundred. Because we've had over twenty code enforcement cases since our code enforcement database started in two thousand eight. And so, you know, in that case, we wouldn't be capturing tons of liens, but the amount of work that code enforcement would not have to do on those same properties, even though they're paying those bills as we do the work, do the abatement and send the property owner the bill, they're paying it. Um, it's still generating quite a lot of work for our code enforcement. So, you know, that's one scenario, and then we have other scenarios where, you know, there's just a, a lot of outstanding liens and I, those are the ones I think that we're going to have title issues where we'll have to track down and find. So, um, right now I'm concentrating on areas because ideally, I think, once we have acquired a certain number of properties in an area, that'll be easier to, um, solicit and, and find a builder and entice a builder to, um, build, you know, a number of homes at one time. Because of course, there's, um, savings in quantity. But eventually I move on to all areas, hopefully around the city. So it's, it's not just a cut and dry. I mean, I'm looking at all of the, the different processes that go into it. There's a lot of research on each property that I've been doing.
Julie, is the Habitat for Humanity considered a builder or not?
Yes, so we would, we would, um, have the opportunity to work with them if they have the capacity. So we're hoping that we get enough that, you know, they're, they do so many a year. Um, and we're hoping that we will also do so many a year that they, they wouldn't want to kind of, they wouldn't want to take on our lots because we're all doing, um, as much as we can. But if they do have capacity, we would absolutely want to talk to them.
Mike, they wouldn't consider adding to the ones that we have? Cause Cindy was looking, or Cindy was looking in the Silver City area.
Yes.
Yes.
And actually, Habitat for Humanity is in the process of buying six vacant lots from the Catholic Church to build single family homes in Silver City. So, and thank you for helping with that, Councilwoman. So the lots that we are looking at, at the first phase of this project that Julie just talked about is in the same vicinity. So you will have that economy of scale. You will have that growth in that neighborhood. And just think that we also have the Autumn Street project, hopefully. So that neighborhood could really get a big shot in the arm when it comes to revitalization. You have these infield lots and you have a three hundred twenty-four unit apartment complex. Plus we have the park, the MLK park that we're working to refurbish. So again, we are excited about this and really looking forward to implementing this program.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to speak to is that, I mean, it's, hey, ten houses is ten houses. But if they're spread out throughout the entire city, you may not see that economy of scale and the revitalization that if ten are done within a very small area or, or neighborhood, it all of a sudden really shows some momentum going that way.
Yes, sir. That's well said. And that's what we have in mind. And thank you again, uh, for the direction from the Housing Finance Corporation.
Mike, one question. When you get to step five on recruitment of home buyers?
Yes.
Who's responsible for that? Does it, does a contractor do that? Does the Housing Finance Corporation, I mean?
No, actually, uh, it's, it's staff. So staff is working, Julie's working with, uh, a Realtor that we've worked with in the past and that Realtor will recruit the home buyers. And the home buyers will receive, if they qualify, down payment and closing cost assistance, which is the number one reason why people do not buy housing. Do you know that? Is because they don't have the debt, the necessary down payment cost or amount. So we will help with that with CDVG funds.
Yeah, so like with, with Swan Crossing, we, we advertise to, you know, all the Realtors and, and all the, um, different banks. And so we just had one or two that really promoted the program and bought all our buyers, but it would really be any Realtor could bring us a buyer.
Okay. So just very quickly, so what, what's, what are the anticipated outcomes from this project? So one is that it will eliminate blight. We have those vacant lots in the community that's essentially blighting our neighborhoods, right? And it will improve quality of life in our neighborhoods. Two, it will revitalize and build single family homes on vacant lots and bring more investment in our communities. Increase the city's tax base. Right now, the vacant lots, we're not making much money off of them in terms of tax revenue to the city. If we can get a house, right, a single family house on the lot, the revenue to the city will definitely go up. And then finally increase the homeownership rate. So the city's homeownership rate right now is about fifty-six, fifty-seven percent, whereas the state homeownership rate is in the low sixties. So our hope is to be the same, to have the same homeownership rate as the state. So with this program, building single family housing, we can increase the homeownership rate in the city. More homeowners, more stable with the, the community. So in terms of the timeline, so March fourth, we had the Housing Finance, uh, Corporation meeting. And, uh, they gave us the direction to move forward. And March to June is when we will begin the acquisition process. And that includes the title search, title clearance in the actual acquisition. The Housing Finance Corporation will approve each acquisition. So we'll, to start off. So we will have to go back and, uh, present the property to be acquired to the Housing Finance Corporation. And then in June, July, we'll issue the RFP, request for proposals for builders. We are hopeful that we'll get builders. Uh, we're very hopeful and Habitat for Humanity could very well be one of them. August, September, recruit the home buyers. And then October, we will begin construction. So this is an exciting project. We think this will have a tremendous impact in the city of Victoria when it comes to getting rid of all those vacant lots that we have in our communities. That's not generating any income except contributing to blight. That's it. My own time.
I, I was going to say as a reminder, that, that financing for all that comes through the housing corporation.
That is correct.
Not from city coffers and from that standpoint. So this is money that's been earned from other projects that are reinvested back into this. So I just wanted that out.
And the buyers also, um, fund the construction of the homes. So they have to qualify for a mortgage, be low income, but also qualify for a mortgage.
So the property acquisition, the maintenance of, is after we acquire them, all funded by the Housing Finance Corporation, not the city, the HFC. And once again, thank you to Ricky Delagrazza for chairing the, the president, Jan Scott and Dr. Young for the leadership on this project.
Just to clarify, you said that, uh, so if we're successful in getting some lots into the land bank, that mowing contract for that lot is covered by the Housing Finance Corporation paying the city or some third party to?
Yes, sir. That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Julie.
All right, that's all we have for today.
I had one thing I wanted to remind people of as you're out and about this weekend. March seventeenth, I believe it is, the library has a program for kids where they go and paint a flower pot and get some seeds and kind of the, just a program during spring break. I know that the library's hosting and make sure everybody knows about it.
Uh, Ken, do you have an answer on the stop sign?
Yes, on the stop sign. We will replace the old yellow posts around it and break away calls. And all of the signs, a lot of those stop signs were faded or replaced. Did have a incident where they were going to add two more stop signs. I said, well, I'm out. Don't add those. So we're going to go back and do a little bit of, I mean, are they? But all, all the other ones, they were there.
Thank you.
We're on a, we're on a very aggressive program to replace some of those old stop signs. Same, and we replace the three main boxes. All new. Find it, all the signs that are yellow posts, those are the ones.
Great, thank you. Um, with that, we're adjourned.